Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Protema, and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the January 22nd meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings by asking God's blessings. And tonight, giving our prayer for us tonight is Pastor Richard Jesse from Greater Shady Grove Missionary Baptist Church. You want to come forward, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Counselor, we thank God for this privilege to come and to call on Him in these perilous times, these good times. And Mr. Mayor, we want to just say to you, we're praying for your continued success as Mayor of this city. Let us pray. Most holy and righteous Father our God, we come to you right now in the powerful, the precious, the wonderful name of Jesus. And we just want to give thanks to you, Lord, for seeing another year. This year, 2019, is a very special year for America. And just thinking about our history, this year represents 400 years of Africans being in America, 400 years. We've been through a lot, Father God, and we just want to thank you for bringing us to this point in this time. We pray, oh Father God, that all of our new elected officials, that you will just move in them and let them govern for you. Our governor, Father God, we pray his success and that he will do what he has said he would do, and that he will get the support that he needs. We pray for our president, Father God, and more than anything, we know that there's nothing too hard for you. So we pray that you touch President Trump, and that you give him, Father God, everything that he needs to be able to serve for you. And we pray, oh Lord God, that those who are going through suffering now because of the government shutdown, we pray that you will end this shutdown soon. But these people who are not being paid for working and who are not working, we pray that they will turn to you, Father God, and trust you through these difficult times. We look to our children right now, Father God. And we pray, oh Lord God, that this generation, this wonderful generation of children, will see a big difference in the things that they have to be confronted with. We came here four months ago, and we called America the 90 Days of fasting and prayer. And we ask you, Father God, if we turn from our using profanity and using all type of hurtful, harmful language, or the end of us using the racial slurs and the N-word and all of those other hateful terminologies that we use. We pray, Father God, that if we repented of that sin, that you will protect our children in our schools and stop the school shootings. And we just thank you for that not being in it since that time. We come today, Father God, because today represents a new beginning for many of us. And we pray, oh Lord God, that your word will be true. You said that when the moon turns red, and the moon turned red a couple of nights ago, you said you will pour out your spirit on all flesh. Your sons and daughters will prophesy. Your old men will dream dreams, and your young men will see visions. You even pour out your spirit on the poor. And we want to hold you to that promise, Father God, for we need your spirit in days like this. So right now, we just thank you for all that you do. We pray, oh God, that you will be with us as we return prayer to school and many of the other things that are going to be going on this year. We pray, oh Father God, that you will be with the parents who don't know you and the communities, people in the community that don't know you, and that we who know you will be busy sharing your love with a sick, dying world. And we're going to start now thanking you, Father God, giving you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Let all who believe say amen.
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 Pastor Jesse, thank you. We're very grateful for you praying for us and for our state and for our country. And we thank you for you and Greater Shady Grove and what you mean to this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are fortunate to have the officers and the leadership of the National Junior Honor Society at Aaron Cone Middle School, some very, very amazing ladies. And we're going to ask them to come forward and lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, thank you. If you would, tell us your name and your age and what role you hold with the National Junior Honor Society.
My name is Heather Ammonson. I am 13, and I am president of NJHS.
Hi, my name is Emily Karaschia. I'm 13, and I am historian of NJHS.
Hi, my name's Leah McCoy. I'm 13, and I'm treasurer of NJHS.
Hi, my name is Savannah Thompson. I'm 13, and I'm secretary of NJHS.
Hi, my name's Kendall Anderson. I'm 13, and I'm parliamentarian of NJHS.
Good afternoon. I'm Ayanna Herron. I'm 14, and I'm the vice president of NJHS.
Wonderful. These are some awesome young ladies. I had a chance to talk with them earlier, and I guarantee you, some of them are going to be sitting in some of these seats up around here. They are natural-born leaders, and they've got, in their escort day, I'm going to let you come forward and tell us who you are as well. It's their teacher.
I'm Ron Fuller. I have the honor to be their faculty advisor.
Fantastic. Well, ladies, y'all did a great job. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait just a second. We've got...
Vice Principal?
Do what?
Vice Principal.
Oh, the vice principal. I'm sorry. No, 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 come on. I'm sorry.
I'm the assistant principal, Stephon Lawrence. I'm just taking pictures.
Listen, leadership starts at the top, and you've done a mighty good job with these young ladies. So thank you so much, all of you, for being here. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right. We need approval of the minutes. Any changes anybody want to make? If not, we'll call a question. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Good deal. We've got a couple of presentations tonight by our auditor. Before he comes up, though, I do want to say very quickly, and we will try to recognize him maybe at a future date as well, but I just want to lift up our city manager. He was awarded the Unity Award at the Unity Breakfast Monday morning, and that's a, it's a very big deal for those of you that have attended that breakfast and understand the names that are on the roster, on that list of people that have been awarded that before. And it reflects on this government, and we're just so proud of him, and we just want to recognize him very quickly. Congratulations. He's not comfortable, I don't think, getting that kind of attention, but we are proud of you. Well, well-deserved, deserved honor. Just a second. Counselor Huff.
Just the city manager. Just wanted to piggyback on that and say congratulations on being the recipient of the 33rd MLK Breakfast Unity Award. And just for the public to know, even alphas recognize good talent in omegas.
Even if they're surprised by it? Is that what you said? Thank you, sir. All right. Our auditor, Mr. Redmond, come forward.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Is it possible to do the external audit?
Yes, I'm sorry. You had requested that, and I'd forgotten all about it.
Yes, sir. It's listed on the city manager's agenda, but if we could bring it up.
Go ahead. Yeah, we've got, our auditors need to, they've got a long ride ahead of them, and they are here. So if there's no objections, we'd like to go ahead and call up the report of our independent auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Let me just say, as they come forward, you know, this is the first year that Malden and Jenkins has done the external audit. And I don't want to, let me just yield to the finance director and let you make the comments.
All right. There we go. Good evening. So as the city manager mentioned, this year is the first year that we've had a change in external auditors for a very long time. And so what I'd like to just go over briefly is initially how we've gotten here. On April 23rd, 2018, Albright-Fortenberry and Ninis LLP met with the executive management to include the city manager and the mayor at the time, as well as city staff, to advise that they would be unable to perform our annual audit due to circumstances beyond their control. On April 25th, 2018, we, myself, contacted the second highest-ranked and responsive bidder of our most recent auditing services, RFP, which was Malden and Jenkins. Had a very pleasant conversation here with Mr. Miller Edwards. And on May 8th, 2018, a letter was emailed to, provided, I'm sorry, to city council explaining the preceding events, just explaining that Albright and Fortenberry were unable to perform our audit just due to circumstances beyond their control, and what our response to that was. And we also advised in the letter that we would come to council on May 22nd to request approval of executing a contract with Malden and Jenkins, and that was approved by council on May 22nd. So, like I said, we've had Albright-Fortenberry and Ninis for a very long time, and I can say that shortly after the May 22nd meeting, the audit activities commenced, and it was different. It was great to have a new set of eyes, take a look at our financial records, and also with that new set of eyes, just came a fresh perspective. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Mr. Miller Edwards. He's the partner in charge for Malden and Jenkins out of the Macon office, and he's going to present our audit report as of June 30th of 2018. You should have in front of you a CAFER document as well as this paper presentation, but the other bound copy is the presentation that Miller will be going over.
Well, good evening. Thank you all for having me here. As Angelica said, there are several things in front of you. What I wanted to follow was one that has a pretty picture of the waterfront. I think that's something we put together that's for these very kind of purposes, to help people such as yourselves and others that may not be nerd accountants like I am, to walk through what does this audit really mean, and what do the numbers mean, et cetera. Of course, during the course of this, you're welcome to ask any questions at any time, unless you want a different kind of protocol. I'm here to answer questions and share with you insights that I may have.
Hold on just a second. I think the rookie mayor just undid your microphone. Can we get that turned back on? Sorry. Wasn't because we weren't pleased with what you're saying.
Testing, testing. One, two, three. All right. You want me to use this? Am I going to be pushing this forward? Okay. Well, again, what you see right there is what we call the auditor's discussion and analysis. It attempts to summarize the financial results that are included in your Conference of Annual Financial Report. When you look at the report, there's a lot of information in it, and it's kind of sometimes hard to digest what exactly it is you're looking at. And so that's why we put together this thing we call the auditor's discussion and analysis. So with that being said, I'm going to peruse through it, and you've got the hard copy, I believe, in front of you. First page you see there is just an example of the clients that we serve. We serve 450 governments across the southeast, primarily in Georgia. So you can see places that are similar in size and nature to Columbus, Savannah, Macon, Augusta, those kind of places as well. It's a big part of what we do as a firm. It's the largest niche we have in the firm. It's not always been that way, but it's developed over time. There's a growing demand in this sector of business for accountability and auditing services, and I'm happy to say, we've been a big part of what's going on here in the southeast. So happy to be of service to you all this year. Hopefully, we were able to bring some experience to the table to make it into a good transition. The next thing I've got is page numbered one, and what page number one does is try to summarize everything I've already said and a few other things. And that is, the purpose of this meeting today is to highlight to you what we have as far as the audit process and the results thereof. What are the different responsibilities by you, by us? What is it that we all are supposed to be doing? What kind of issues did we have? Did we have any kind of problems that we had to go get expert testimony or expert help and consultation doing some things? We didn't have any of that. Did we have any kind of issues when it came to independence? We didn't have any of that. Those kind of things are addressed inside this document. We also talk about the financial statements themselves, and some of the good things we see and any concerning things we might see. Additionally, we have some recommendations for improvement that you would expect, I would think, of a new auditor, not to mention just as the annual audit process alone. So again, that's what this document attempts to do, is summarize all of these things as we go through it. You turn to the next page. That's just a little bit more about who we are. We have eight offices. I am out of the Macon office. I live an hour and a half from here. I live on the west side of Macon. So I appreciate you having me up early, but hopefully, it won't be too long of a drive home. I might be home before y'all get finished. You never know. So, again, that gives you a little summary of who we are. That's what pages two and three are for. Now we go to page four itself, and page four attempts to summarize the auditor's report. And you've asked me, you've asked Malden and Jenkins to come in here and to audit the Columbus Consolidated Government. The reason for that is not just to meet state law or any other kind of bond covenants, but it's a one-time-a-year, it lasts more than one day, it kind of goes for about six months, but it's an opportunity to have someone come in from the outside with certain expertise to look at what you've got for financial statements, look what you've got for the record-keeping function, and to opine on, are we in good shape, and are these financial statements indeed correct? And so that's what the audit process is. So we've been asked to essentially certify what you have here in front of you as far as your Conference of Annual Financial Report. I'm happy to say that we are able to give you what you might call a clean opinion, in our industry, we call it unmodified. We are able to give you a clean opinion on your CAFER, which means basically to you and all other instant parties that we do believe that your financial statements that have been presented to you present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the results of operations for this year that we are being asked to cover. So as of June 38th, what's being presented to you tonight, we believe we can give a thumbs up and say they are accurate and to be followed. We did have an emphasis of matter. That's a new paragraph that's inside this document on page four. The emphasis of matter has to do with the new pronouncement that was implemented this past year. You all probably have heard about other post-employment benefits, otherwise known in this industry as OPEB. There is a standard that you all had to implement this year to put that into your financial statements at a new degree, a new level, and that's been done. The reason we call it an emphasis of matter is it was material. It was a large adoption of a new principle, and we felt like we had to make that in our audit report very clear. Going to the next page, page five. You all do what you've heard me refer to as a CAFER, a Conference of Annual Financial Report. State law and general accepted county principles don't require a CAFER. They require basic financial statements, okay? You all have elected to do this additional work, and you've been doing it for many years, long before I got here. You all have an introductory section that talks about a lot of things. Some of them are financial, some of them are non-financial. You also have statistical information. That's the third set of bullets you see. You've got statistical information that gives you 10 years' worth of data. So if you want to see how we looked in 18 and say, you know, how do we compare to 2012? That data is greatly in here. Some of it's non-financial as well. If you want to see information about certain services and what the level of services were on a non-financial sense, some of that is in here as well. It's a great way of providing to a reader something more than just this one snapshot of this one year, but giving you other information to compare to right here within the document. Hats off to you for doing it as long as you have. Pam, how long have y'all been getting a CAFER award? 30 years or so? I mean, so again, y'all have been doing this for a long time, and not a lot of governments have been. It's becoming more and more popular, but you all are one of those kind of governments that paved the way for others to want to do this and to emulate you. So again, hats off to you for that. You've been recognized and awarded a certificate every year that you've done this. I fully expect you to get it again with this year's audit. Going to page six, the overview of the financial statements is where we begin, and your audit is very encompassing. You've got your primary government yourself, but then you think about all the component units you've got, like the hospital authorities included in here, the waterworks is included here. You've got a lot of entities that are related to this consolidated government that are part of the big package of what's in this CAFER. Some of those entities have been audited by other auditors. We have to use their audit accordingly to incorporate it into your audit and audit everything else that remains. So again, it's very much a team effort of approaching this overall audit. When I look at the city itself toward the bottom, the last third of this page, highlights that hit me. You all are pretty large government. You've got $728 million worth of assets in your primary government. That's looking at your general fund, through your proprietary funds, your agency funds, everything. You all have got a large government here, $728 million worth of assets. A lot of that is capital assets, a lot of that is things like the roads, the bridges, the facilities, all those kind of things. But nonetheless, you're talking three-quarters of a billion dollars' worth of assets are being managed in some shape, form, or fashion by you, this governing board. So that's a pretty large government. You've got about $386 million worth of overall liabilities. We're talking about things as simple as accounts payable, to revenue bonds, to other kind of debts, to net pension liabilities, things of that kind. You've got a large amount on your balance sheet. You end up having a net worth or an equity of about $342 million. Now, I don't know about you, I'd love to personally have that kind of balance sheet. Can you imagine having $700 million worth of assets with only $386 million in liabilities with a net worth of $342 million? That'd be pretty awesome. It's a good-sized city that you all govern right here. There's a lot of things going on, is the point. You do have an unrestricted deficit. When I look at this and I say you've got a net worth or an equity of this large amount of 342, a lot of that's invested in your capital assets. And so if you dive into the equity section, you've got a lot of things invested in capital assets. When it comes to the free and clear, you've got an unrestricted deficit. You might sit there and say, whoa, 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 why do we have a deficit? You have a deficit there like a lot of governments do nowadays. With the adoption of that pension standard a few years ago, and the adoption of that OPEB standard this year, that is about $190 million worth of liabilities that you all have now that you used to not be reporting on your books, okay? Now, by doing that, you still have an overall equity position, but at the components of equity, you've got an unrestricted deficit in there. Nothing to cry about, nothing to worry about. That's the way a lot of governments look. I've got governments your size and bigger that have a lot more unrestricted deficit. I've even got some governments that, at this perspective, have a total deficit of their liabilities outweigh their assets. I got one school district that has a $1.4 billion liability for their pension plan. It took them under four years ago when they adopted that, and the OPEB plan made it go even deeper. And this is a huge government that we're talking about, one that you would recognize. So again, this is not unusual. Actually, you look better than most governments of your size. Going to the next page, I dive into the statement of activities. That's what we call the income statement at entity-wide level. In a nutshell, at the primary government level, at your fund levels, you took in about $292 million worth of revenues this year, okay? $292. But you also had expenses of about $278 million. So your bottom line was about $13, $14 million. I think it was like $13.5 million that you had for a bottom line. People might say, well, why do we need to have a bottom line of that kind? That's, you know, we're not in the business of making money. No, but what this did is this provides cash flow, because from that, you have to be able to pay for debt and other enhancements to the facilities and those kind of things. So at this point, it is important to show a good, strong bottom line, because there are certain things that you otherwise might think you're expensing that you're not, that's going to your balance sheet. You've got to have this coverage to do it. So I look at this, and I think this is a very good-looking and reasonable statement of activities. That's just a perspective I want to share with you. Turning the page, I've got some graphs, some charts up there, some pie charts. The general fund is now where I'm about to take you and look at the general fund itself. That's the heart and soul of the government. Fair statement. Most times, if we're going to get into budget debates, it's going to be about the general fund. Well, your general fund took in about $187 million this year. So of that previous number of that $292, $187 of that ran through the general fund. Components of that revenue stream, you can see in that chart, property taxes was about $57.5 million. That represented about 31% of your revenue stream in the general fund. Your sales taxes were at 38% coming in at about $72 million. So just those two alone, you were looking at about 69% of your revenues were coming in the form of property taxes and sales taxes.
Would you give those 2% as I give?
The property taxes were 31% of your overall general fund revenues, and your sales taxes were at 38%, okay? Now, somebody asked me earlier this morning in another city, very similar in size to you all, what's the right mix? This other city I went to this morning, again, they're almost identical size-wise to y'all. They actually, 50% of their revenues were from property taxes, and they asked, is that too high? And I said, well, it really depends. It depends on what kind of activities and commerce you've got going on. The job of a governing board is to find the right balance and the right mix. So there is no one-way or the highway approach, and your approach can even change over time depending on what goes on here. But in your case right now, those two represent 69% of your revenues, just those two components alone. Another thing that we've got down below is the expenditures, and we're looking at it the same way. And you see that big slice of pie? That big slice of pie is public safety. It's about $101 million. It represents 59% of your expenditures. So that's a big part of what you have here. Public safety is always the biggest part of a city or a county government, so don't be surprised by that slice of pie. It's a big part of what goes on. Is it the right level right now, 59%? That same government I went to this morning, they were at 50%, okay? Right or wrong? There is no right or wrong, but I'm just giving you comparability that you just always ought to kind of be attuned to, is how do you compare to other places? I will tell you, this other government I went to this morning is not near as healthy as you all are, okay? So you've got to weigh a lot of things into this mix. But 59% is a pretty large chunk of where your time and effort is going. I'm sure you see it and feel it in your capacity up here. That's a big part of what local government is about, is providing public safety, fire, police, all those type of things. The next page, we look at your change in fund balance, and you can see it kind of goes all over the place, up, down, and all around. That's the nature of a general fund. It's not unusual to have it go up, down, move it all around. You have to appropriate some of fund balance, but this will give you a snapshot of the last six years of what we've had happen with fund balance at the general fund. This year, it actually increased by 1.4 million, and that was after making some restatements that I'll get to in a few minutes. So your overall fund balance, when you compare it in this CAFER to last year, it increased by 1.4. Only you can decide if that was the right direction. Personally, I think it's important for governments right now to be building up their fund balance. We had a recession that started in 2008. I had a lot of governments that took it on the chin back in that period of time and ate their fund balance down. Some of our governments that didn't have a good fund balance going into the recession really took it on the chin, had to cut services and all kinds of things. The trick right now, if I'm in your shoes, is building for that contingency of tomorrow. And I keep hearing people, economic experts, saying recessions come every 12 years. 2008 was 12, 2020. I hope it doesn't happen, but part of what you need to be thinking about right now is the importance of growing that fund balance, to be able to continue to provide services in those lean years. So I think adding a layer of fund balance is a good thing. So that's just a personal opinion, not anything more than that, okay? When I do look at your fund balance, I do think that you're in a healthy position. Nothing to write home and brag about, but I do think you're healthy. This other government I went to today had 13 days' worth of fund balance. That means that their funds, they had net-net of all liabilities at the general fund, they had 13 days of wherewithal. You all have 100 days based on that measurement. That's a pretty big difference. I see a difference in health real quickly. I know that for you all, you like to look at unassigned fund balance, which is a fair thing to do, because you've got restricted elements of fund balance. Your unassigned is about $33 million, which gives you then about 75 days' worth of cash and investments to fund this. That's pretty good. That's where you probably ought to be at June 30th. Think about it, what you have at June 30th. At June 30th, you've still got to get through July, August, September, October, property taxes start coming in. taxes start coming in. We need to measure out nicely at June 30th. If you're getting measured at 9:30 like Cobb County does, you're going to look a lot different. You might look anorexic. Okay? You get measured like Gwinnett County does at 12:31, you might look fat as a saddle. Okay? It's when you measure it, and your measurement is June 30th, and when I look at June 30th, you need about three months' worth of fund balance. You need what you've got here, if not a little bit more for contingency planning. So again, I look at it, and I think it's in pretty good shape. I think you're right where you ought to be. Nobody should be upset by having too much or too little. You're kind of right there in a nice little place to be. That's a personal perspective as well. Turning the page, I'm out of the numbers for the moment. I'm going to dive into the rest of the audit. As an auditor, we are required to do a variety of testing, not just look at the numbers, but look at your systems and look at your internal controls and how well you follow state laws and federal laws and covenants and all those kind of things. And you actually look pretty good. We had two findings this year, but they weren't necessarily related to systems as much as they were to some prior period adjustments we had to make, and I'll dive further into that in a minute. But when I look at your systems, overall, you're in pretty good shape. You don't have a lot of conflicting or segregation of duties issues. We do have some, but not material enough and significant enough that I need to call that a finding. We also looked at your federal programs. This past year, you took in almost $8 million worth of federal funds through federal programs, you know, like the Workforce Investment Act, things like that, the WIA, airport. You had all kind of improvement grants done out there. Those two are the two that we actually tested, and we added up to about $3.5 million. So we tested about 50%, like 45% of your federal funds, and I'm happy to say that I'm able to give you an unmodified opinion as to your compliance with the federal funds that you received. I can't say that everywhere. I had another airport improvement grant that I went to in the same place I talked about this morning, and we had a finding relative to that. Being in compliance with federal guidelines is tough to do. If you've ever been in that role, the rules of the game seem to change daily. You know, you get a grant, and this is what you think you're supposed to do, and then you find out, no, they want you to do it another way. It's just a constantly changing situation. You all came out unscathed. You did everything right. You met the standards. You dotted all i's and crossed all t's. That's a good place to be. On page 11 is the beginning of several pages that I won't bore you with, but they're there for me to tell you anything that I'm required to. We call it required communications. A required communication would be if, say for instance, I had a disagreement with management, we couldn't agree on something. I'm required to tell you that we had a disagreement. I'm happy to say we had all agreement. Once we got through the first-year audit process of how you do it and how we think it ought to be done, we always found a happy meeting of understanding and everything is good. We had no independence problems. That's always something we have to report to you. If there was any kind of concern about independence, we need to share that with you because we need to be independent. You've hired us to be independent of management. We have none of those issues. We didn't have any reason to go get expertise. We didn't have to call Washington, D.C. to ask for special guidance on anything. Everything was pretty apropos the way it ought to be. So we had nothing there to really share with you, and that's what I basically say on those few pages right there. But if you jump to page 14, we start diving into our recommendations. And you heard me say when we were talking about the internal control testing that we had two findings, and they were adjustment-related. The first finding we had had to do with receivables. In government, there's a lot of do-to, do-froms. Pretend that each one of you all represent a fund of the government of Columbus. You might be SPOSS, you might be the other SPOSS, you might be a debt service fund, he's the general fund, we're just all across the board, we've got all these funds, correct? And as part of that, as a happy family, we move money around, we share it, and we'll loan you money over here so that you can do this, and you'll loan it to us. We got to a point when we dove into this this year, we looked at it with management, and we had concerns about collectibility. When it came to some funds that actually owed another fund, it's like, well, how's that fund going to ever pay that? And with that challenge, we ended up determining together that that probably is something we need to address. Okay? If it's not going to be able to be paid anytime soon, if ever, maybe we need to write it off. And so what happened is, is that we, as management, and these are the representation of management, these statements, it was determined that we needed to write something off and treat it as a July 1st of 2017 opening change to fund balance in these funds. So what that means is, is the general fund, who most funds owed money to the general fund, it actually took the write-off. But by taking that write-off, the other funds look better. Okay? So as we wrote something off, if the medical center fund owed the general fund, by writing it off, the medical center fund looks better now, it looks like it ought to, and the general fund takes it on the chin. Doing all that, nothing changed in the whole household, but we cleaned up how the funds looked individually. The household, nothing changed. Okay? But we had some adjustments. And because we as auditors are required to opine on individual funds, we have to then therefore treat as a restatement and have a finding relative to it. Okay? That's the nature of what we had here. It's not unusual. A lot of the times we do first-time audits, we have these kind of things come up, and if they're material, we have to make such restatements. Is there any kind of question? I get the impression there might be.
Not a question, but just to comment, the medical center fund, I believe you used, was not a good example, but what would be a good example would be the civic center or the golf authority.
Or the what?
Golf authority or civic center. The medical fund would be the hospital, the county hospital.
Okay. You're right, the golf courses.
We do three meals with them, and that's enough. So I just wanted to make the point so that before you go further.
I got you. That's fine.
That golf authority, civic center, and you're familiar with all of that, but he used that as just an example.
It was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a sensitive.
But you use your example better, it's a better example. When you've got a golf course that owes the general fund.
I tend to any government that has a golf course that makes money. I've never seen it. And so when a golf course owes money to the general fund, you have to say, how are y'all going to pay that? And we're not really sure. Okay? Then maybe we need to go ahead and deal with it. And so that's what we ended up doing.
Excuse me, I've got another question from Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Edwards, I see it looks like there were eight of these funds that had an adjustment. Is that typical? Is that unusual? Is that worrisome to you as auditor at all that there were that number?
I mean, you've got two answers to that questions. It is not unusual for us to come in and have these kind of adjustments. I mean, everywhere I go, large or small, you ask Augusta, Georgia, Macon, Georgia, Gwinnett County, Mr. AAA rated Gwinnett County, the first time we did that audit, we had a bunch of prior period adjustments. So this is not unusual to have a new look at things and make these changes. Now, does it worry me? Was your second part of the question? Not at all. Because the beautiful thing about this, there's no lingering effect. It's not like we're sitting here saying, you've got a problem, and it's going to take years to fix. It's been fixed. It's done. After talking to management, we were able to determine that this was the right answer, and we've reflected inside this CAFR, and there's no more lingering effect to it. So no, it doesn't worry me at all, especially as I talked to management, we got on the same page about what the resolve needed to be. I feel much better about things upon doing that.
And as I understand, one of the things that you said, by doing this, it does not change the bottom line.
Of the whole government, of the whole family.
Of the entire.
That's right.
Accounts that we have.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
And one quick comment. In my presentation, as a response to the audit findings here, which was regarding the recording of the receivables, I don't, counsel may recall in FY14, we actually did recognize the change in the standards. And this is where, you know, Miller and I had some discussion about the interpretation of what that meant, because at that time, we recorded the adjustment as, based on our interpretation and at the recommendation of our external auditors at that time. So that's why there's no overall adjustment to the accounts, because we've already recognized it from an unassigned fund balance standpoint. It's just now we're doing it differently based on the recommendation of our new auditors.
Yeah.
I guess one of the major parts of my questioning to you was, is this troublesome to you? When you say no, that's reassuring.
And it's no, you know, it's kind of like in years where, you know, the golf authority didn't, and we said, you know, we've got to put in $300,000, but you're going to owe us that money. Well, we know we're not going to get that money, or the civic center, or those agencies such as that. So, but we.
It's a cleaner and truer picture of what we're doing at the end of the year, just to reconcile some of the funds that weren't quite self-sustaining.
That's right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
We were expensing those deficits over time. And so instead of doing that process, now we've expensed all.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on that, and it wasn't the urgent care deal. So, but anyway, that was just an example.
Thank you. Clear as mud, right now. No, I do think things are better. And I think, you know, like Angelica said, you all had already attempted to do this by using it as a reserve fund balance approach in the past, and what we want to do is just get it off the balance sheet entirely. And as was just mentioned about an example, you know, when you're going to give money to someone to go buy golf carts, you know, if you don't think you're going to get it paid back, if it's going to take 20 years to get it back, maybe we ought to just go in and gift it and never forget about it, you know? Never forget about it, but let's keep our general fund clean as much as possible. And that's what we were trying to do, and I'm satisfied with everything. And again, there's no lingering effects to this at all. I think it's a better picture by fund. Each fund looks more appropriate. Looking at the next page, item number two toward the bottom, we also worked with management to determine there needed to be a restatement having to do with accrued interest. In the past, you've had debt, like most governments do. You've got your share of debt. At the fund level, like at the general fund level, you don't accrue interest. That's one of the craziest things you'll ever hear in governmental accounting, but at modified accrual, you don't accrue interest, even if it's due tomorrow. Even if a million-dollar interest payment's due tomorrow, you don't accrue it until it's due. But when you go to the entity-wide level, when you go to the full accrual picture, which is what I opened up with when I talked about 728 million and 386 and all that, that you are supposed to accrue interest. And the trouble was, that didn't get converted in the past. So we had an adjustment that we needed to make to the entity-wide level for about 3 million, and unfortunately, that's deemed to be material, which results in this being a restatement finding. Just like what you asked a moment ago, does that give me any consternation? Not at all. We're clean now. We're on the right page, and there was nothing malicious or anything about what they were doing. It just didn't get converted the right way, but we're good, we're golden going forward. And it doesn't affect your general fund, that's just the entity-wide. That's when I'm trying to look at everything, all the funds together as one. So I think we're good to go on that, too. You're not going to see these two findings again. It would be something really, really strange if you were to see that again. So as you go to page 16, we have left the concept of findings, and now we're just looking at management points, take it or leave it kind of points, do what you want to kind of points, but things that we see that you might want to consider doing some change. One of the things has to do with the agency funds. When we went to the magistrate court and the superior courts offices, when you go to the magistrate, they've got a very old system, and we learned from experience and in talking to them, it crashes a lot. And you know as well as I do, you ever like it when your computer crashes? Is it a lot of fun to have to try to find that information and reinvent what you did all day long? We would just say that you need to get with that court and see if there's anything that needs to be done in the magistrate court to maybe upgrade the system to where it becomes a more reliable system that doesn't have the potential of crashes and those kind of things. So again, just a recommendation. At the superior court's office, kind of the contrary, most of what they do over there, not most, a large part of what they do over there is handwritten. We're talking manual. I don't know about y'all, but I'm human, and I make mistakes. And when you start getting to the manual nature of accounting, that's when mistakes happen. And we would recommend that that court and you all look and see if there's something that we need to do to enhance the accounting over there and not let it be so manual and handwritten form, but have it be something a little bit more automated. So again, just a recommendation.
And I know it's awkward, Mr. Mayor, but.
Our finance director will be responding to these, and you know we've got a new court management system going in, so.
Again, all this is as of June 30th, so what you may have done to correct things since then, we haven't incorporated. We're kind of snapshotting this time that we were looking at. Item number two is old outstanding checks at the magistrate's court as well. There are checks that are old and outstanding that have not been cashed by the party they were written to going back to 2010. Well, in Georgia, we've got these things called a sheet laws, unclaimed property laws, and all we're recommending to you is maybe get with your legal counsel, get with that court, find out exactly what we got, and see if there's anything that we might, that we may have to give to the Department of Revenue under the name of unclaimed property. So again, nothing to lose sleep over. On the next page, page 17, item three, segregation of duties at the agency funds, you do have in magistrate, superior, and probate and municipal court, some segregation duties issues. You've got situations where one person is in charge of a wide variety of accounting, you know, from reconciling statements to signing checks to preparing deposits. Probably ought to find a way that we can break that up somehow. I would just ask you all to talk to those different courts and see if there's anything that can be done to mitigate any concerns there. So item four is similar at the board of commissioners' office itself. Your finance director is currently the one that does the bank reconciliation for the pooled cash accounts. In a perfect world, we need to have somebody else do that. So I would ask management to take a look at that, see if there's any other way that we could have another person involved in that area.
And Mr. Mayor, I have to pay you, keep responding, knowing.
That there's going to be a response, but we've had conversation with you about the finance director reconciling for the time being, and the deputy city manager over, well, being that person, that independent person until we get another person in the finance department. You know, we've had that conversation. And so that's how it's done, but his report is correct.
I'm talking to y'all, I want you to be in a perfect world. I want to live in utopia.
Absolutely.
And so.
I mean, great job.
That's what we're trying to address here. If we're trying to be a utopian Columbus, we want to have the right controls everywhere, that one, I think we need to take a look at. Item five has to do with the budgets. You've got these four tax allocation districts. State law requires them to have a budget. We didn't have a budget. I think that's easy to address. Let's create a budget. Even if we're at mid-year right now without one, I think management can put one together, bring it to y'all for incorporation into the overall budgets of all funds. Again, that should be easy to address. Number six, debt transactions. This is a accountant nerd speak right here. When you all issue bonds and you've got premiums and discounts relative to those bond debts, the standards ask you to do it using something called effective interest, which is more closely resembles interest expense itself. You all are using what's called straight line. You're just taking the amount divided by the life and acting like it's a straight-line depreciation. It's not materially different, but it's different. And I just would recommend y'all take a look at that, see if there's another way of doing it going forward. Number seven, in the sheriff's department, we noted there are two accounts used by the jail, the inmate, and the commissary fund, for which those accounts were not previously included in the total agency cash. When we started asking questions about, well, where's your jail commissary fund? They're like, well, we don't keep that on the books. That's separate. And we're like, nah, it needs to be a part of this whole thing. So again, just want to share with you, there were two cash accounts that have not been incorporated in the past that are now a part of those agency funds. The last thing we've got, as far as the recommendations, on page 18, and this is purely a recommendation. You've got five component units that are audited by other auditors. A good example, the waterworks, the hospital authority, and those type of entities. This happens with a lot of governments that are county governments, where they have a lot of component units like this. I would strongly urge you all to work with those entities to see if you can come up with a timetable that has them present their audits to you all far in advance of when your audit is due. It doesn't, it's not very good feeling to be sitting here on December 31st, trying to get this thing out the door, and we've just gotten an audit over the weekend that we've got to incorporate into this. It doesn't leave you much time to qualitatively look at things. If I'm in your shoes, since you're the parent of all of these other governments, I think it's fair to ask them to maybe provide an audit to you by December 1st that you can then incorporate into. I'll tell you, the state of Georgia does that at the state level. If you're Alton Lotto or Georgia State Financing Investment Commission, those audits have to be issued by 9:30. So the state's June 30 audit can incorporate those with ease. The Georgia Port Authority audit, it's issued by 9:30 every year to do this. All I'm asking is if we can have them by 10, 12, 1, I think it'd help everybody involved. So that's it on the recommendation side there. The rest of this, I won't bore you into great detail. The rest of the pages are for your bedside table reading. If you need help going to sleep, I'd say start reading page 19 and go forward, and you should be done in a page or two. There are new standards out there. If you haven't noticed, Gatsby, that's the financial reporting party that issues all these standards that we have to follow, they have stayed very busy. They issued something called Gatsby 34 that was supposed to be the end-all, be-all standard in June of 99. Remember that, Pam? They've issued now 90 standards. They've issued 56 new standards since that one was issued 19 years ago. They aren't slowing down. They've got more coming. And so what I've got in the rest of this document is to advise primarily management as to new standards are coming that are going to affect this government. Make sure you stay on top of it. Don't get behind. Don't be in a reactive mode. And I know, we've talked enough about it, but I want to let you all know as well. The last thing included in here is just to let you know, we have a lot of continuing education we provide. Since March of '09, we have provided to our government clients free quarterly CPE. Anybody is welcome to come. If you want to come, if you want to come, if anybody wants to come, just let us know. We'll put you on our address list, and you can be invited quarterly to our CPE that we have in different locations across Georgia. We usually have about 100 people show up per quarter. It's been a very successful and very, very good thing to provide to our clients. Now that you're a client, we sure hope we can see you at some of these type of things.
Well, we appreciate it. I think Counselor Woodson has a question.
First of all, thank you very much for the report. It was very pleasing. I was nervous sitting here and see what's going to happen, but made it sound like our finance department and our government and department heads are doing a very good job. And they should be thankful for that, and we're very grateful. This cannot be, this report cannot be this successful without their hard work, their willingness to listen, their willingness to adjust, to be able to ensure the well-being of our citizens and our government. So to you and our staff, I say thank you, too. I have one question, and that was probably addressing it probably to the city manager or city attorney, I'm not sure. On page 18, where he was mentioning that we should get those reports by December 1st from all the entities that we're supposed to give, is that an amendment that we would have to do to an ordinance, or is that just something that our finance director can just direct everybody to say, going forward, we have a new auditor, we have a new process in 2019, by December 1st, we need all your reports?
Mr. Mayor, and that's a good question. What I intend to do is bring something back that would be officially adopted by this body, because exactly what he has talked about, we have had that problem with some of our affiliate agencies in the past that was going to cost us, and, and we were prepared to try and pass the cost on to them. But I think excellent report, but I intend to bring something that it will be official, and it comes from this legislative body.
Okay, thank you, because I think that's important based on the information you provided and, and have mentioned today that we're all on the same page, especially when we're responsible for the taxpayers' dollars.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much to everyone. And again, to the staff, congratulations for a job well done.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Yes, sir.
You know, this was a kind of an emergency transition from the previous auditor to Malden and Jenkins. And you've done an excellent job bringing forward this report today. And I feel like I just sat through a physical exam.
Okay. I've never been compared to that, but I'll, okay. That'll give me something to reflect on the way home.
But, but it was a, it was a fiscal checkup, and there were fresh eyes and very thorough detail. And I really appreciate the report that you provided today. And he noted that we have a large government, and we do. And he noted three billions, three quarters of a billion dollars being managed and a net worth of $342 million. And, and he comes with a, with clean opinions, unmodified audit report. And Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I really, just to follow with Counselor Woodson, want to thank our professional award-winning staff for the job that they do. They truly do a good job, and I'm proud of them.
Absolutely. And I think, and I think, you know, sometimes, sometimes out of a sort of a, an unfortunate happenstance, we end up with a positive action. And I think that the, the fact that we, on the spur of the moment, called in your firm and y'all did such a thorough job of looking, looking at our financial situation, I think that was a good thing. I think it's, it's comforting to me, and it should be, and I imagine it's the rest of the elected officials, that, you know, fresh eyes caught a few things we could be doing better. But the bottom line is that, that our financial practices are sound, they're transparent, and they're designed to make sure that the citizen's money is not only spent well, but it's also accounted for very carefully. So yeah, there's some things that I think, and I think all of your recommendations make great, great sense. It just sort of cleans it up, makes it a little bit, little bit more clear, so. Counselor Day?
Just to add one, right?
Yes, sir.
I would echo some of the comments I've already done said, but I would think in any corporation or large entity, I mean, you've got to realize this is what a, just for numbers, like $280 million budget, government, municipality here, that you've got a lot of moving parts. And sometimes I don't think people understand that. A lot of moving parts. So we do, we've always had, as long as I've been on council, we've had, we've had great oversight there. We've had a lot of people, good people that are looking at it. And the thing about it is that, you know, what I appreciate is you being straightforward, thorough. You've offered a lot of detailed information, but at the same time, you have the confidence to present it appropriately, and then it's the city's job to take it from there. But that's how it should be, and that's how it works across the board. I would probably be really concerned if there was nothing that showed up. Matter of fact, over the years, a lot of us have talked about that, really. There was nothing that had showed up, and then we, you know, I think all talked about pushing a little bit more to, to make sure everything is at the forefront. So I appreciate that, and I have confidence that our folks that work for the city and the citizens of Columbus will, will address it. They always have, and they've done a good job, and they're, they take it serious and they're professionals. But I thank you for presenting it. You verbally, you, you gave us a lot of information at a tremendous speed. So like City Manager said, you, I feel like I went through class myself. So I just wrote a bunch of notes here.
Sure.
But I've got some questions that I would like to ask you, just if you can go over, and I just kind of saved them for this moment. I think you're finished with your presentation.
I am.
Okay, and I'd like to ask you these. You, you talked about, there was one matter, I think it, did you say it was the dealing with the pension or whatever, but it was an accounting matter that changed, that now reflects as a liability in the, in the audit report? And it didn't seem like you were really concerned about it, but my question would be along the lines. I'm not really sure where this liability is recorded, but the question would be, does it affect, does it affect our bond rating? Does it affect our bond issuances? Does it affect the ability to borrow money or to go out and to, to do projects and so forth? What, I mean, help me understand that change, that accounting change, and how it really, where it's recorded, and what it really affects, or if it affects anything at all?
Well, for you all, it's mostly recorded at the entity-wide level. At the modified accrual level, which is your general fund, your SPOLOST, and those type of funds, those special revenue funds, debt service, it's not included in there. But when you go to the entity-wide, you have to include your pension liability that's net of its assets that it's holding. You have to also do the same thing with what's called OPEB, other post-employment benefits. The pension standard came out about four years ago that the city had to adopt at that time, that the government had to adopt at the time. Now, this year, you had to adopt this new one for the other post-employment benefits. You had a liability on there, but with this new standard, it had to change, and it actually went up in size. Yes, on one side, you might sit there and say, well, gosh, that's a large liability. You're talking $191 million, which costs our unrestricted deficit. Okay? But every government's going through that, and what that is reflecting is, you're going to have some demands on your cash flows going forward. Okay? But it's not like you've got a current debt due. It's not like you've got a note payable that says, this thing's due next year. It's something that's going to be paid over, the pension is probably going to be paid over 60 years. You're talking about someone who's working here today, who's built a vested amount, who's going to work here another 20 years, who might retire for 25 years. So you've got a big wide range. It's one reason why I don't like the liability to be owned there, but I understand where Gatsby came from. But when they did that, most governments had to take it on the chin. It's not often you put a liability on the books with no asset. Okay? And that's what happened with those two standards. Let me give you a little tidbit on the pension and the OPEB. Your pension plans are right now about 71% funded. When you look across all those pension plans that you have, you're 71% funded. That might be a little lower than average. Average right now has been about 78% this last year. The market kind of went down, and some governments were sitting 82, 83. It's come down. Your OPEB, and let me just say, and that doesn't give me any kind of consternation. You're, you're within the realm of reason right there. Your OPEB is only, get this, it's only a $60 million liability. Okay? The city I was at this morning, that's a little bit smaller than y'all, has $139 million. Okay? So you've got a lot less of a pill to swallow over the next 30, 40 years than that other community does. You don't have OPEB hardly funded. Of the 60 million, you've only got about one and a half million of assets in there. The challenge that a lot of governments are going to have over the next few years is the concept of possibly funding OPEB like we've been funding pension. And the question is, should we, should we not? Right now, you've been offering OPEB for years, probably since 50 years ago, but it's always been on a pay-as-you-go basis, like 99.9% of all governments. They've been on a pay-as-you-go basis. So putting this standard on there is causing everybody to have to put in a big dollar amount. State of Georgia is about to have to put a $20 billion amount, that was with a B, 20 billion on their books for OPEB. Imagine what that's going to do to their equity situation.
So is this recorded in the pension fund, or where is this liability recorded?
It's recognized at your entity-wide level. When you go to the statements and you see the first couple of statement pages that we've got after the management discussion and analysis, you get to the balance sheet called a statement of net position. It has a government activities column, a business type column, and a total. Look in that total, and that's where you're going to see the liabilities that I'm talking about.
But it doesn't, it doesn't affect our bond ratings or anything like that?
At the bond level concept, I think the bond rating, people have seen this and known it was there for years. Okay? They've seen it in the footnotes. There's been information in the footnotes for years about what our unfunded status is at every government for OPEB and pension. So they've known it was there. It's just now put front and center, and every bond rating person I talked to kind of does, we've known that was there. It's just on the balance sheet now. It doesn't really affect anything.
Well, and what I heard you say about the reserve, it probably doesn't really matter at that point with the numbers that you were stating, so. Let me, let me get in your mind a little bit here to understand what exactly you were thinking about. You, you stated, you were talking about property taxes and sales taxes?
Yes.
The ratio, you, 38, 31?
31, right.
Well, I sensed, you didn't really go into detail, but I sensed that there was an alert there, that alarmed you or something.
It's no alert.
What were you thinking? Is it reverse?
Like I said, like I said at the time, every government I go to looks different. The other government I went to today, property taxes were 50% of their revenue stream. And they asked me the question, is that good or bad? I said, you just have to look at your situation, the demand on your services that the community wants to have, and how are you going to get there? Do they want to have higher sales taxes? Do they want to have higher property taxes? Do they want to have higher fees across the board in different areas? There is no right or wrong.
Are you, let me, let me get a little bit more to my point. Are you concerned about the fluctuation in property taxes? I mean, if you're at 50%, depending on your tax structure, that could fluctuate depending on if a recession comes, but what about if you're in our situation and it doesn't fluctuate?
I would, I think property taxes is a very stable base of revenue typically. You can have recessionary effects, and we've all lived through those moments, we've had to do the rollbacks and go look at things from a new angle. But property taxes is actually a pretty stable amount of revenue. It doesn't change typically in most governments drastically. The most drastic change...
It did in 2008, though, right?
Well, some. But I tell you what's more drastic, go back in time and look at sales taxes. And if you remember, about 15 years ago, we had a, State of Georgia, a general assembly person out of Carrollton that was wanting to get rid of property taxes and have nothing but sales taxes. Do y'all remember that? I am so glad that didn't happen. Can you imagine if all you had was sales taxes and no property taxes? Can you imagine how volatile your revenues would be year in and year out, just depending on what the recessions do?
And that goes to the second part of my question. So you're not really concerned about those ratios, but then you go over to the sales tax side at 38%. You know we have two dedicated perpetual pennies, that that revenue will come in perpetually.
Well, we can only hope. I mean, that's, that's the idea. And again, only you all can decide, and your citizens, as does that, what we want to continue to do.
Well, looking, understanding that and looking at the 31, 38, should, were you saying that the property tax is appropriate, or should it be higher, should it be lower?
I'm not saying either one. I'm just sharing with you, just for digestion purposes, that you're at 31, 38. There is no right or wrong.
Okay, that helps me a little bit better. Mr. City Manager, I did see in this report, there were a couple of red flags, I think, that we need to, we need to address internally, so I'm, I'm glad it was noted. And I'll, I'll be glad to talk to you a little bit more in detail about that, but...
Are you referencing the eight findings?
Yes.
Because our finance director is wanting to respond to those tonight.
Okay, that's good. Do you, do you cover any of the, in, any of the agencies such as the Golf Authority, the Development Authority, or do you do the audits there, or somebody?
We do the audits of anything that's not audited by others. Right now, you have audits that are done by other auditors on, let me see if I can get that exactly for you. Your Columbus Water Works is audited by other auditors. Your hospital authority is audited by other auditors. Your Department of Public Health is audited by other auditors. Your Convention and Visitors Bureau is audited by other auditors. And last but not least is your Airport Commission. Those five entities are audited by other auditors.
Yeah, so what we require is that they...
Consolidate.
Have annual audits, and that they provide us a copy of those audits, and that's what they do.
Okay. And then we incorporate those audits as part of our audit strategy of what else is remaining to be audited.
Well, I'm glad to see that's a recommendation, that they all report in a time we matter along with, with this report. That's good.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions from council at this time, we're going to have our finance director respond.
It may answer a lot of questions folks have anyway, so.
All right, hello again. So I won't belabor this point. This was actually something that was mentioned a moment ago, but in, in response to the audit finding regarding our receivables, just again, in FY14, we changed our, how we recognize fund balance as it relates to those internal loans, those due-to, due-from other funds. And based on our interpretation of the accounting standards and the recommendation of our external auditors at that time, we handled the auditing, implemented the auditing standard as we did, which was basically taking it out of unassigned fund balance, so it's not counted towards the days that we calculate, and putting it in another fund balance bucket. And over time, we were just expensing what they owe to us over a period of time. And so what we've done this year is just expensed all of that off this one time, so we'll no longer do that misadulation on an annual basis. And there was no impact to unassigned fund balance because we'd already taken it from unassigned fund balance. So it wasn't money that we were planning to use or trying to use at, at any point after FY14. The second audit finding regarding the accrued interest on long-term debt, you know, new eyes, new perspective. So, you know, although this wasn't a finding previously, we have implemented additional procedures to ensure that we accrue the interest as recommended. So regarding the management letter points, the eight points that Mr. Edwards was just referring to, as far as the accounting system for the agency funds, the city recognized that we were in dire need of a court management system. It was old, it was outdated, and it was in need of an upgrade. We have been in the project planning phase for a comprehensive upgrade since FY17. We've been setting aside money since FY17 for this new system. And we are currently in the implementation phase. Back just the last quarter of 2018, council approved us moving forward with Tyler Technologies for a new comprehensive, fully integrated court management system. for a new comprehensive, fully integrated court management system. And this implementation is scheduled to be completed in 2020, and we do anticipate that this new cloud-based, web-based system will alleviate any concerns pertaining to potential data loss. Again, it's cloud-based, so it's not housed on our servers, it's housed up in the clouds, and there are significant backup, backups for disaster recovery. So we also feel that this new system will increase the accuracy in the data that's being reported by these courts. And so that, again, happened after June 30th of 2018. The second point, as far as the owed outstanding checks regarding the agency funds, although the Finance Department does not have direct oversight of these funds, what we are willing to do in consultation with the city attorney's office is help the magistrate court with the disposition of those old items, as far as providing guidance and advice regarding the state's unclaimed property program. This is actually something that we've done at the request of Chief Judge McBride for child support payments in adult probation. So we've done this before, we've assisted another agency within the government, so we're willing to lend that assistance to magistrate court as well. Regarding the segregation of duties for the agency funds, again, the Finance Department has no direct oversight of these funds, but we will meet with the courts to discuss the duties that are required for their operations and see if the segregation of duties as suggested is possible with the current staffing levels. Of course, you know, we need people, and I think that's all over this government. You could probably hear from several courts that will tell you that they could use some extra hands, so I, we, I am willing to sit down with the courts and we can go through that as we gear up for the FY20 budget process and sort of talk about some of the segregation of duties and see what we can maybe help them rearrange or shift with their current staffing levels.
Yeah, we've made it, I mean, it really is kind of tough for some of those, some of those courts, just because they've continually, you know, as we all have, asked departments to do more with less. And sometimes that's almost a physical impossibility, so appreciate anything you can do from finance departments area.
Yes, sir. So regarding the segregation of duties for the government, this really pertains to the reconciliation, the bank reconciliation being performed by myself. I have extensive knowledge of performing the bank reconciliation, I've done that task for several years here, and so, and with staffing changes within the finance departments, you get a person and you think they're going to, you know, assume this responsibility, and then, you know, something happens, they leave, things don't work out, so then it comes back on to the finance director to perform. I can say that I've recently hired another member, another staff member to perform this task, and as training is ongoing, I myself will obviously continue to perform this as it transitions to the, to the new person with direct oversight from the deputy city manager of finance, because she also knows how to perform bank reconciliation for the city.
Okay, Councilor Thomas?
I'm glad to hear, Ms. Alexander, that you're looking into this. I think that this item, in conjunction with item two, I mean, item three, the segregation of duties in these other places, that we as the city government ought to lead the way. We ought to show how it can and should be done. So if the finding in both of these instances is you've got to separate these duties, I'm glad to see that you are taking steps to do that, because I want us to say, do as we do, not as we say. And so that I'm glad that we're leading the way in this, in this particular one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree, Councilor Thomas, we need to lead the way, and I do want to say that we recognized this problem early on, and that's why when she was going to have to go back to reconcile, and we brought in the deputy city manager, who's the previous finance director, who oversees finance in another building, to oversee her or watchdog her reconciliation, so, but we need to fix it internally within that department, and you're absolutely correct.
So, to point number five, regarding the budget process and reporting, this was the no budget being adopted for the TDS. Due to the implementation of the new property tax software ISWOR, reporting related to the tax allocation districts was not readily available at the time of budget adoption. However, through the concerted efforts of the Tax Commissioner's Office, and I say they've put forth a lot of efforts to manually figure out, to provide reporting to us regarding the tax allocation districts, but going forward, we will have or should have the information that we need to establish a reasonable budget during the upcoming budget cycle for all tax allocation districts as required.
Councilor Thomas?
Ms. Alexander, I guess I need a little clarification about the budget that you're talking about. What is included in, I mean, is this a budget of how we're going to spend all of the money that we spend in Tax District One, or what, what are you budgeting, I guess is my question?
Well, essentially, right now, we would be budgeting the amount of expected revenues that we anticipate we'll receive in each of the tax allocation districts. I mean, we don't have any expenditures right now because we don't have any approved projects, council has not approved any projects, so it would honestly be, honestly be revenue, anticipated revenue.
So it's just, how much money are we going to collect from Tax Allocation District One, and how much are we collecting from Tax Allocation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's not to go to the next step to say, and this is how we're going to spend this money in this particular tax allocation district?
Right, no, not at this time.
I just wanted to be clear in my mind, thank you.
So regarding item number six, regarding the amortization methodology, we, again, this has not been an issue previously, but we are very responsive to the recommendations of our new auditors, and we have changed our amortization methodology from the straight-line method to the effective interest method as suggested. In regards to item number seven, as far as the jail funds, again, this is another one of those accounts that the Finance Department has no direct oversight over. The jail inmate and commissary funds have been audited on an annual basis by external auditors, and this is usually done at the request of the sheriff, since these accounts are typically outside of our standard audit process. And to our knowledge, all funds were included in prior years, all funds were included in the total agency's cash, since there was a special audit conducted for these accounts. Now, we know, as Mr. Edwards mentioned, he said they weren't included, but they were, they are included as of June 30th of 2018, and going forward, we'll make sure that they are included. And so the last item is the component unit financial information. This is very important to us. We rely very heavily on receiving the information from our component units in a very timely fashion. We will send written communication to all the component units, and I like that the city manager has suggested that we take it further and get it officially adopted by city council, as far as the timeline in which they are to provide their financial information to us, because we were trying to get this information on Christmas Eve, so.
And I, again, I'd like for council to officially adopt it, because I've had to send some real ugly letters to some agencies because of delays in getting that information to us, but.
Adopt is a part of a resolution, or?
Yeah, well, whatever the city attorney suggests, resolution or ordinance, but we need to get something from this legislative body.
You know, it wouldn't, it may not hurt if, if we looked at our entire fiscal process from the budget, the typical budget timeline, all the way through the CAFR, and when, when our, our components need to bring their, their audits to us, and just put it all in a resolution so that we sort of codified a timeline that we're all using as a baseline to move forward, so I think that'd be a good idea. We've got Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I think something like that, there's going to be a guideline would be better in a resolution, that way you could modify it quickly if you needed to. It may vary from one year to another depending on some unforeseen circumstance, but you can do that in a resolution.
Okay. Councilor Thomas?
And I would include in that, we are supposed to, for example, get a budget, an audit report from those entities that collect the motel, hotel motel tax, and to give them a specific deadline too, in that same resolution might, might prove to say, everybody has the same, or a standard, whatever that might be.
Okay.
And that is all that I have in terms of presentation. I'll take any question if council has any.
I think they've been hitting you as they go. Any other questions about the responses to the findings?
Okay.
And Jessica, thank you. And Malden Jenkins, the representative, thank you all very much.
Let me just put one little statement out there, one act, one last thought. It is fair to think that all of these management points and findings go away next year. You may hear from me next year and have me say you have no management points or findings. I don't think this is all going to be rocket science and things that we're going to have to really turn places upside down. I think we've had a great enough dialogue with management that I'm quite confident that all this will not be here next year, so.
Well, good. Well, we appreciate your efforts, and we appreciate a fresh set eye, and a fresh look at it. Thank you. All right. We, we have asked our internal auditor to perform, he's, he's got a number of audits on his radar screen, but he's got a couple that he's going to present now, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Redmond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney. It's good to be here tonight, present to you a final report on the internal audit of the Health and Wellness Center. This audit was requested in May of last year, following the presentation by a benefit consulting firm, Shaw Hankins. We looked at quite a few areas of their operation, but we focused more, not just so much on the numbers, because they gave us a lot of detail on numbers and statistics, but we looked more at some of the other areas in terms of the quality of service and the satisfaction level of our employees and their covered dependents. You may recall a little bit of background, Shaw Hankins, our benefit consultant, recommended CARE ATC to manage the CCG Health and Wellness Center back in June of 2016. They made some, recommended some benefit design changes for the pre 865 plans on the health care, reducing from three options to two, eliminating an HMO plan and creating two new point-of-service plans, a gold and silver plan. Previously, we also had one plan that was dedicated to the Health and Wellness Center as the primary care provider, and that benefit changed effective January 1st of 17, about two years ago, allowed any person in any of our plans to participate and use the Health and Wellness Center, and this has increased the participation therein. The city contribution is based on a set percentage of the employee cost of the silver plan, with the same dollar contribution being applied to the gold plan. Shaw Hankins Healthcare Plan Overview presented on May 1st of this past year included an overview of providing statistics on chronic disease management and efforts to manage chronic disease, claims analysis of aggregate claims filed, and cost trends of health care plan for the past five years versus regional and national averages. And you may recall that their graph showed that we had actually been flat for the last three years in terms of the rate of increase in our cost of our overall health care programs as compared to regional and national standards of 7% to 10% on the medical side and about 15% annually for prescription drugs. The Health and Wellness Center has saved the city in this last year and its employees $882,000, that was during fiscal 17, of which $566,000 was on office visits and $316,000 on the prescription drug cost. These savings were achieved with only 20% of our employees and 5% of the covered dependents using the Health and Wellness Center. Now, when I looked at that, I thought, that's great that we achieved those kinds of savings, but what if we had 80% or 100% included? That savings could have been four or five million dollars, and it still could be. So we looked at it with a goal to increase the cost savings and reduce total health care plan expenditures. The auditors focused on four areas: increased participation in the Health and Wellness Center, wellness and prevention programs, expanded disease management programs, and additional opportunities for direct contracting. The city currently contracts with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, which was formerly Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia, for administration and enrollment and claims and use of its contracted provider networks and network pricing, including its negotiated discounts. Currently, Blue Cross Blue Shield has the largest market share in Georgia of any non-governmental program. As such, they're able to use their tremendous buying power to achieve much greater discounts off the price of the care than have been able to be afforded to other providers. So that works out best for us. It gives us the broadest network, but at the same time, it gives us the lowest pricing because of the higher discounts. The city operates the Health and Wellness Center, which is managed by CARE ATC, which provides a significant amount of visits for a fixed cost and supplies in generic drugs at wholesale cost. High-volume services such as laboratory and radiology are direct contracted at very discounted prices in exchange for guaranteed and quick payment. You might say, well, why would they sell them to us cheaper than they would sell it to Blue Cross Blue Shield? But actually, they will, because when they do business with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, there's a lot of medical review procedures, there's a lot of denied claims that they don't think are necessary services and what have you. Our situation with them is very different. When one of our providers at the Health and Wellness Center writes an order slip, and the employee or their dependent takes it over there to, for example, the Columbus Diagnostic Center for CAT scan, they know that as soon as they perform that scan and send the results back, they send the statement back marked that it's been completed, and it's going to be immediate, rather immediately paid by CARE ATC. Turn me back on. That's an important factor in the whole thing, and that's why they will do a better deal for us than they will someone else. Let's look in at the comprehensive report, we've talked about that, let's go on to the next page. Our plan has leveled out, as I said earlier, and I want to recognize that this benefit design plan came from Shaw Hankins' recommendations, and CARE ATC implemented the portion of it for the Health and Wellness Center. This was a joint effort of the CCG Administration, City Council, Shaw Hankins, and CARE ATC, and they've generated positive results for our city. Customer comment cards on the Health and Wellness Care Center that we gather and collect at your direction, we've done that since day one of its operation. I want to share with you the results from this year's surveys. Bruce, can you turn my thing back on? Okay, there we go. The, we, we look at eight specific items, and then we have a ninth one, which is kind of an open-ended comment section. The first thing we look at is the time to schedule an appointment, and this really measures accessibility and capacity of the Health and Wellness Center. When people call in for an appointment, 39% can get one on the same day that they call. 52% can get it the next day. That takes care of 91% will be done, seen within 36 hours of when they call, depending on when it is, what time of day they make that call. That is phenomenal. I think if you think about your own doctor's offices that you use, if you're not at the Health and Wellness Center, you'll probably think, mine's not quite that good. Another 8% fall within the three-to-seven day category, and there's 1% that's over seven days. And I would suggest, after looking at it, that more than likely, those were requested that way by the person when they said they couldn't get in today or tomorrow, they said, okay, how about next Monday or Tuesday or whatever, it's more convenient for them. All right, our second point is how was the care you received today, which is a level of customer satisfaction, at least it's their perception of satisfaction. 85% rated excellent, another 10%, very good, 2% good, one fair, and two poor. That's 95% of it, very good or better. Did the provider listen to your concerns? Another area of customer satisfaction, we all like to think that what we say to our doctor or our provider is important, and we want to know that they're listening and paying attention to us. 97% said yes, they did, only 3% said no. Did the provider answer your questions? Another area of customer satisfaction, again, 97% said yes, 3% saying no. Did the provider meet your medical needs? 97% yes, 3% no. The next one gets down into time of wait. How long did you wait in the reception area? This deals with service efficiency. Less than five minutes, 54%, 6 to 15 minutes, 37%. That gets us up to one- to fifteen minutes, thirty-seven percent. That gets us up to about ninety-one percent in less than fifteen minutes. Another six percent went the sixteen to thirty minutes, and we had just one percent in the thirty-one to forty-five, one percent in forty-six to sixty, and one percent of more than sixty. The ones that are in those larger categories were attributable to one provider that was having some problems getting into work on time, and that very quickly, once presented to the management company, CARE ATC, they rectified that situation. They worked it out and fixed that. How long did you wait in the examination room? Again, service efficiency. Less than five minutes, forty-five percent. Another forty-three percent went the six to fifteen minutes, and an eight percent went the sixteen to thirty, and just two or three other percent in the other categories. I guess the acid test of how people feel about the Health and Wellness Center is answered by the next question. Would you recommend the Health and Wellness Center? Your family member or two of your colleagues? Again, this is customer satisfaction, and ninety percent would recommend it, again. We just have a bomb dropping.
Just about.
Okay.
I'm just applauding and jumping up and down for those numbers.
I know you're excited. These are good numbers. Today is a good report, so y'all be at ease. All right, the recommendations and responses. One is to continue efforts to enhance the health care cost savings through lower cost of health care delivery through the Health and Wellness Center and direct contracting as warranted by service volume. The response, Human Resources has agreed that they will work with CARE ATC and Shaw Hankins to review opportunities for cost savings and direct contractings annually. Human Resources is currently reviewing recommendations to include e-consult, which is a peer-to-peer consult by the Health and Wellness Center provider with a specialist before a specialist's referral is made for the patient. They're also looking at direct contracting for physical therapy and also for at-home sleep studies for potential direct contracting. So these are some new areas that they're looking at where we can buy it at an even lower price than we get it through the discounted rates at Blue Cross Blue Shield. Now, a lot of this hinges on having enough volume to make it worthwhile. You know, another area that we could possibly do it would be, you know, renal dialysis services. The problem is, you have to have enough volume to warrant getting a contract with an individual provider, so at this time, we didn't have quite enough of that to warrant that, but that's another area of possibility, because those are frequent visits and they're generally ongoing for long periods of time. The next one was to increase participation in the Health and Wellness Center through promotion and marketing. Human Resources will continue to encourage participation at the HWC at the time of enrollment, during open enrollment, and by participation in the personal health assessments, health education, health awareness programs, and other incentives. You may recall, just this year, you all approved letting the people that participated in the health risk assessment and the biometric screening, and if they did those things as an incentive, that they would not receive the seven-point-three percent rate increase. We jumped from about twenty-five or thirty percent a year ago up to over seventy percent, I'm told, this year as a result of that. Another thing that was cleverly done, I think, was that many of these, the oversight of these two screenings in both the health risk assessment and the biometric screening were performed by and through the Health and Wellness Center, which gave a lot of our employees additional exposure to it, and many of them found that they liked it. So a lot of those people are now using it on a more regular basis, some that had never used it before. So that's a very good way to increase participation. So we thank you all for allowing them to do that and hope we can continue that in the future. We also want to offer health education programs intermittently throughout the year to the employees and covered dependents, and Human Resources and CARE ATC have agreed that they will continue to offer these programs: healthy cooking programs and onsite exercise programs and others as may be possible. Also, we want to encourage employees and dependents to participate in exercise and fitness programs to include their health, improve their health status and quality of life. Again, we've responded with, we will continue to encourage our employees and dependents to participate in these programs, including but not limited to the Walktober Program, the Biggest Loser Contest, Weight Watchers at Work programs, cardio programs, and our tobacco cessation programs and others as they may be created. Any questions on this report? It's a very good report. We're seeing a lot of positive results, and I think we all deserve to recognize that the city council and the city manager and the mayor have been very supportive of this endeavor, as has our Human Resources Director, Ms. Teresa Hollowell, and our CARE ATC is our managing provider over there, and Shaw Hankins, our benefit consultant. I really think we're on the right track, and I think we will see that we have the opportunity to not only bring that cost trend down from its level point, we may actually take it negative, because there's two components that really make up that trend. One is utilization and the other is cost. We always refer to it as a cost trend, but if you take the utilization down, even if the costs remain the same or rise slightly, you can still pull the curve down on the overall cost. If we could increase those savings even by getting half of our people to do it, we're probably looking at about an additional two million dollars of year in annual savings. That is a lot of money that it would free up to do other things that need to be done in this government. So I would encourage you to, you know, keep that in the forefront. Any questions?
No. Good job. Hang on, Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I just want, Mr. City Manager, I just want to thank you and your staff. I know we ask about this every year when we look at our Health and Wellness Center when it comes budget time, and we've done some audits and all, just to keep a good eye on it. We've been open now for the Health and Wellness Center. It's been, is it four years now? Five? Five years now, and it looks like it's on a great track and moving in the right direction, and, you know, a lot of people need credit for that, for not only the vision, the idea, but, again, this year, there's a savings, a return on investment, Mr. Redmond and with your partner, Ms. Barfield, and all looking into this. We really appreciate it. Our consultants, I just, I think this is a positive in our government, and the positive is it's not only returning an investment, keeping costs down, but it's saving the city money, and at the same time, you know, just providing the services at a much lower cost. When you look at things going on on the national side, and both locally, you look at all the other surrounding corporations or employment entities, employer entities, and what they're able to offer, I think this government still is able to offer health care at a very low cost, a low rate, and it's the employees' health plan. It's not, it was really not the government, it's the employees paying into this, so this is, I view this as a positive report.
I do too, Counselor Davis, and I appreciate your comments. If you recall, back in the earlier part of this decade, we were looking at cost increases in the five to eight, nine percent range, while nationally and even regionally, they were at a few points higher than that. But every year, that created a funding problem when you guys came together to look at the budget, because you said, well, it looks like we might have a million dollars in new revenue this year, and suddenly somebody sucks a straw and it all goes up in the health care fund, and, you know, there was not money for pay increases, there was not money for funding capital purchases and other things that really were priority things: additional employees in some departments, as we heard earlier from our auditors, that are needed. So I think that this is really, is more positive than even we realized, and if we can increase those savings by getting more people participating, we will save even more.
Thanks, sir. You know, and I tell you, there's not many ways to control the cost of providing health care, and that's not a governmental problem. That is a nationwide issue with employers trying to continue to provide for the folks that work for them. And I give credit to our HR department and our department heads, because they had to help our employees reach a comfort level that they weren't being asked to get rid of their doctor. This was, this was an opportunity for them to go for supplemental health care as, to put a spin on it, and they're going to have an impact, have a, make a direct difference in what it costs them going forward, because if, the more people that are utilizing that health care or the Health and Wellness Center, the greater the likelihood is that we'll be able to hold the line on the cost, and that's going to have an impact in their paycheck. So I just think it's a great job by the department heads and by our HR department as well.
Okay, thank you. With no other questions, I'd like to move on to the second presentation, which will be very brief, and this is an update on the status of the corrective action plan on the Office of the Clerk of Council. You may recall, we issued the audit report Ms. Barfield presented back in August of last year and resulted in some changes, and you all asked us to develop a corrective action plan and then to, you asked Ms. Barfield, our forensic auditor, to provide some oversight for that, since she had performed the audit. Now, obviously, she didn't go over there and manage the department in the absence of the clerk. The deputy clerk, Listen, ran that with the other employees in the department, and I want to say there was a lot of people that helped out with making this thing happen, but frankly, there were portions of it with so many missing minutes that my guess was it might be a couple of years to get it done. But what I wanted to report tonight is that it's done even much faster than that, and those people, all of those people, as well as people in the finance department, particularly in the purchasing division, we had some outside consultants come in. Doug Rollo came in from the, and assisted. City manager offered the services of his intern, Lawrence Christian, who was very active, involved in particularly in some of the systems aspects of it, as well as other things. The Georgia Clerks Association participated, and as I said, Doug Rollo came from Georgia Archives Records Management and provided some onsite consultation and guidance. Without the help of all of these people, inside and outside, we wouldn't be to the point we are today, because we had a long way to go. First thing, the overview, we established the priorities for the corrective action. We looked at summary minutes, which could be corrected very quickly, official minutes, which were going to take considerably longer. We estimated contracts, which were not, about half of them were nonexistent, they were not organized, and certainly were not arranged in any technological system, and also to identify technologies to improve the clerk's office productivity. So those were really the big issues. A few other things, we're removing some old records and moving to record storage facility, things that need to be retained, but that didn't necessarily need to be in the immediate area, to implement and administer the record retention program according to the state of Georgia guidelines. Mr. Hugo has had that going on over at the Records Management Center for many years, but all of this was not necessarily moving over there. To reduce clutter and rearrange the storage areas in the office and remove obsolete equipment and excess filing cabinets. And the whole goal is really, the overriding consideration is to make the office as paperless as possible, except for the required official books of minutes, ordinances, resolutions, titles, and deeds. Those things, you need to retain the hard copies, and they need to be available at all times for public inspection or for reference. Also, to increase the frequency of the MUNICODE updates. Previously, they were being done semi-annually, and by the time they were sent off and they came back, they were, it was approaching nine or ten months, and that's just not frequent enough when you're posting your codes online, your ordinances, and you've got citizens and businesses out there that are trying to abide by them, and you've had changes that have not yet reflected. So we wanted to increase the frequency of those, even though it does cost us a little bit more to do it more frequently. We also wanted to look at the separation of the payroll processing duties within the office. In the past, the clerk had actually overseen both the entry of the time and the approval of time, and we talked earlier tonight, you all have, about separation of duties, and then within the payroll process, that's part of what's recommended with our new payroll system. And Ms. Hollowell, Hollowell and also the finance payroll section have been working with our department heads to train people, one to be the timekeeper, who records the time and puts it into the system, and then the approver, which is usually the supervisor, manager, or director, that actually approves the time. And theoretically, if there's an adjustment that needs to be made, those changes go back to the timekeeper for the correction, and then they're re-approved. And that's very important, because the timekeeper enters the work, the hours worked, for vacation, sick leave, holidays, and other types of absences, and the approver reviews and approves all that time before the payroll office processes the payment. Here's the current status of the corrective action, and I think you'll be very pleased. I was just elated when I went over there on January the eleventh and looked at the status. The summary minutes were up to date through the last city council meeting at that time. They were all in place. The official minutes in the books were up to date, awaiting approval of the January eighth meeting, which they couldn't do until the next meeting, before signing and placing in the minute books, except as noted below. Minutes for the following dates do not exist, and there are no notes or videos for their creation. There's ten dates, and I've got them listed for you, but the good news is that they're all back from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and ten, so the likelihood that we will have a need to reference those is fairly slim. The other thing, when Doug Rollo came down, he advised us to include a statement of fact in all of our minute books, which basically says that they're factual and accurate to the extent that they possibly can be, but there may be some errors or omissions, and that kind of covers these ten dates that are not covered. The contracts are now up to date, except for a small number that are retained in administrative departments outside of the contracts that are on file in the purchasing division of finance. Our finance department, in particular the purchasing division, keeps a very accurate inventory of all the contracts that they administer, and particularly the ones that are active. They even retain the old ones for a period of time after that, but they were very helpful, Andrea McCorvey and her staff, in opening that access up to the people in the clerk's office and allowing them to access it, so they knew what they, they could actually check their inventory and determine what they needed to add to their files. The contracts that were more difficult, that they're still working on, it's just a small percentage of them, are the ones that are retained in other departments for, because they really administer those contracts, and these are things like the highway departments and the planning, a lot of those road planning and building projects, those things are really administered either by planning or one of those departments, engineering. So sometimes they have those contracts, but they're working on getting those. So this element of it is probably about ninety to ninety-five percent complete at this time. We anticipate it will be completed in the next several months. So really, in a period of six months, all these deficiencies have pretty well been cleaned up. Obviously, you've appointed a new clerk. We've got the staff in place. During the time of the cleanup, there was some light duty people, there were some public safety workers that won't return to light duty that came in and helped us out. We also had two temporaries in there for a short period of time, and one of them helped cover the absence of the secretary in there while she was on maternity leave. So it's just really amazing how far it's come. As I said, the updates are now submitted monthly or as ordinances are adopted. Obviously, if we don't have any in a given month, then there wouldn't be anything sent to MUNICODE for codification. The new software for agenda preparation and minutes has been purchased from MUNICODE and is scheduled for implementation and staff training in February of this year. Policies and procedures in several forms have been updated to improve efficiency of the office, quality and accuracy of the information obtained, and the old records were transferred to the record storage facility in implementing the record retention guidelines. As the older records exceed the retention guidelines, they will be destroyed, and a certification of destroyed records will be provided to the clerk's office by the record retention facility, and the city council members and internal auditors will perform unannounced visits to the office to review and complete a work completion status report periodically to ensure that the work product is current and to ensure adequate oversight of the office of the clerk of council. I have a couple of additional recommendations, and I would like for y'all to consider these. One is recommended that the Office of the Clerk of Council continue its efforts to prepare, store, and provide documents in electronic form and make the office as paperless as possible, accepting the legal requirements for books of official minutes, ordinances, resolutions, deeds, and et cetera in printed forms. We also recommend that the city council appropriate a little bit of funding for the office to be repainted and recarpeted to provide a more professional image for this important official city function of the city, because this is the day-to-day face of the city council. I know the citizens see you on TV when we're having a meeting like we are tonight. I know that they come before this forum and address you, but on a day-to-day basis, really, that office is the face of the city council, and the carpet in there is really old and threadbare, and really, it needs some attention and some new paint. I think probably five thousand or so dollars could probably take care of that, but I hope we can find some funding to do that. We commend the efforts of Deputy Clerk Listen, the We commend the efforts of Deputy Clerk Listen, the office staff, and others who have significantly contributed to this improvement of the office of the clerk of council. The project has been accomplished much faster than was expected, and we acknowledge the significant efforts of those involved in restoring the records of the clerk's office to its expected level of timeliness and accuracy. A few remaining items are manageable and can be finished soon. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor. Mayor Protem Pugh.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say thank you to the clerk's and council's office staff.
Absolutely.
For the time that you all put in, and also Ms. Barfield, for the time you all put in to getting everything, trying to get everything caught up and looking at different ways on which we could get things caught up. And the way we can more efficiently have an ongoing impact on the items that were brought out. And Mr. City Manager, I don't know who would do this, but if somebody can do an analysis of the office, the physical office itself, and see what needs, what it will take to bring it up to a better shape than it was in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know they're having a lot of problems with the heat.
Yes.
I understand, it was horrible.
Yeah, well, Madam Mayor Protem, I'll have maintenance to look at the heat, but on other matters of painting and things like that, I've already asked Deputy City Manager Goodwin just a minute ago to get involved and take a look at that.
Okay. And just listen, if there's anything else in there that you think needs to be done, send a recommendation to the city manager's office. Or to Ms. Goodwin.
That's right.
Furniture, whatever. And that includes any equipment that you all need to do your job, that needs to be brought up, the modern days equipment.
Mayor Protem, they have made a lot of strides to make this a better work environment. They cleaned out a lot of old and obsolete equipment, things that were, computers that were broken that were still around in there. When they removed so many of the records and organized them and put them into electronic form, they were able to clean out a lot of files that were being stored in filing cabinets. And really, it's a much friendlier environment today than it was a year ago, but when we were actually doing the audit over there. I think there's just been a lot of effort, but you know, the final touches are really fairly easy to accomplish. And yes, it'd be nice to have some new furniture in there. I'm sure they would appreciate that in addition to the carpet and the paint, but, and there probably are a few pieces of equipment that would be helpful. The new software should be a big benefit, particularly in terms of preparing the agenda and the minutes, because it helps you to do it more efficiently. They do a great job now, but if you can do it a little bit more efficiently, it allows you time to devote to some of the other tasks, making sure you've got everything you need and it's out there and posted. But it's been very important to get those records online, in particular the summary minutes, get them out there to where they're available to the public within the specified 72 hours following the council meeting.
All right. Any more comments or questions of Mr. Redmond? John, thank you for what your office does. Appreciate it very much.
We'll be bringing you more reports in the near future.
Yes, sir, I'm sure you will. All right, we're going to move to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. Fay?
Hit it again.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a fairly short agenda, but the first item up is a public hearing. This is the appeal from a sign variance denial at 6454 Milgen Road. Mr. Robert Teasley is here with Signs Inc., and we will let them come up first, introduce yourselves and tell the council, I know you want a bigger sign area and a taller sign, but if you would introduce yourself and tell them what you're after.
My name's Ken Jones. I'm with Southern Sign Crafters out of Montgomery, and I'm partnering with Robert to put this sign, to try to get this sign installed.
Good evening, I'm Robert Teasley with Signs Incorporated, and we come today to ask for an appeal approval for the sign height increase to 20 feet. This property is located between the J. Island Parkway and Flat Rock Road. It's about center of the property. It's behind Rite Aid, it's behind Sonovus, it's behind the Waffle House, and it's not, you know, fronting on any of the roads of the gateway. It's centered in the project. And we did a, we just didn't guess at the height of the sign. We did a study for the sign. We hung a target to go back to the traffic lights at Flat Rock and Milgen Road and did the traffic. And the shorter sign would be in a hole that would not identify, and this is going to be customers every day, body shop type repair that need vision on the road, and it's definitely a hardship for them, being in the center. Had they bent out on the main road, monument sign would've been fine. However, they're in the center of a development.
And the building's set back behind the Waffle House too, so you can't see the building at all either.
Okay, well, let's see if there are any questions around the table, and then we'll let the board of zoning appeals members that are here speak.
Yeah, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may know, this is located in District 6, and the property in question sort of slopes down. It starts from Highway 80 and slopes down to Flat Rock. So this is sort of in a low-lying area, which would require the need for a little higher sign than normal. I'm okay with it. I haven't heard any complaints from anybody in the area, so I just wanted to let you know that bit of information as we go forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem?
The question I had was, it's going, the proposal is to go from lengthwise, the height, up to 20 feet?
Yes.
And the sign ordinance now approves it up to how many feet?
No, the sign, to the top of the sign is 20 feet, to the bottom of the grade, down in the, you know, from the, from the bottom of the grade up to the top, it's 20 foot.
What's the UDO? Is it 6?
Yep, 6.
It's going to go from 6 to 20.
And like I said earlier, if it was out on the road, if it was in the, where the traffic could see it, 6 feet, we would not be here today. But again, they're within a, away from the interstate, kind of in a hole, back down.
Two signs, the two adjoining businesses, both, of course, they were before the new ordinance, but they're a big size too. And like I said, they needed to be able to see for them to get in there.
Well, I took some photographs of some existing signs, like Flat Rock Square is 35 feet tall, and the Waffle House is 25 feet tall, which is in front of it. On the other side facing the interstate is another, another one that's 20 feet, it's Sonovus Bank. So it's surrounded by all property, Rite Aid.
Could we see those?
Oh, absolutely.
How tall is it?
That's 35.
You're not going to be able to see it if it doesn't go higher. Not saying it. Not getting it in there.
How tall is it?
It's 20.
Is this 20 feet?
Right.
Oh, that's what you're asking?
Right. Yeah, we're not trying to go any, the Waffle House is a little over 20 feet. I'll put this one up there for you as well. And it's, it's when you drive into the project, this is the first sign you drive by going back down into where this new business is located.
What, 30?
Right, it's, I think it's like 29 or something.
I guess my question would be to our staff. Is it something we need to do in a UDO, or just these type signs? It's not in there now, something we need to change, because it seems like, if they're already out there.
Well, majority of these signs that he showed, they predated the sign ordinance, the overlay district when it was put in. The one at Flat Rock definitely was before, and Waffle House was as well. The way the overlay is, is just 1,000 feet from the center line of Highway 80. So wherever it is on either side, you can kind of see where that dot is, that's the location of the soon-to-be collision center. You know, we came almost a month ago about the new property over here where those with mill, once again, that's, you know, it borders into that overlay district. So that's kind of where we, where we stand on it per se, just, we're just enforcing what's, what's in there. We'll have somebody from BZA speak on the ruling.
I understand we're enforcing what's in there, but do we need to change what's in there?
Well, I mean, I personally, if the overlay is in, but we're just...
Yeah, I think what makes this unique is that it is in an overlay district.
That's it. And so I wouldn't say that we need to change the overlay, but I think you, they're going through the process that they need to go through if they want something different than what you approved in the overlay district. So I think the overlay is fine. But, and any others following them need to go through BZA and through the same process on a case-by-case basis.
Mayor Protem, is that all? All right, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to make sure that we identified that those pictures that will show what grandfather did, I don't think the UDO overlay should be touched, but is there a rig in there where it says there could be special exceptions made? And if we can do that, then I think case by case should be determined. And I think his case is very well described, because if I understood correctly, it's down in a valley and there's so many obstructions around it, so you wouldn't see our normal sign ordinance in order to, a normal sign because of all this deterioration and stuff and forth. Am I right or wrong, Rick? Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we got that clear. I don't want to mess with the overlay or anything like that, because we are trying to make our city beautiful and...
But they just build a brand-new building there too, and it's going to be a new customer base every day, it being a collision center too, and that's why, you know, they want to have the signs so they can find where they're at.
Oh, I understand, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want to change the overall overlay, that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur, the overlay is fine, and as I think they've tried to describe, I drive by this spot every day multiple times. And they're basically on the south side of Beaver Run, and all those buildings on the south side predated the overlay. And so they've all got signs that are 20 to 30 feet tall. And where they're situated, if they have a 6-foot sign, nobody's going to see it, because every building there is going to block it. Whereas on the north side of Beaver Run, those all, I guess, came after the overlay, because there's not a signage issue there, but it's also high ground. And so I concur with what they've said, or the problem they pointed out, because of where they are and they're surrounded by buildings that predated the overlay, a 6-foot sign might as well not even be there, because nobody's going to see it.
Thank you, sir. And I think we had some members of the BZA that wanted to make...
I believe Mr. Harrison is here, if you want to come up and be heard, sir.
Good evening. We meet again. Basically, the board's going to say exactly what we said last month. Really, not much of a change in discussion there. Same thing, you know, if, if we do it for one, and do that one, and then the very next one's coming up out there, they're going to want a 20-foot sign to, and then the very next one wants a 20-foot sign. So it's the same discussion that we had. If it comes out of there, then this was the city that decided to have an overlay, so we'll let the city say if they want a 20-foot sign or not.
Counselor Huff.
I want you to leave with a smile on your face tonight.
I'm smiling now, I'm good. It doesn't matter to me. As a chairman, I didn't get to vote anyway, I just sat there.
We are very proud of you and the board and what you do, and we understand the situation, and you are following the criteria that you were given. And we want to know, we appreciate what you do. And when we get in these situations, we'll have special exceptions that we have to do, but they've brought enough information to show us proof of why they need what they need.
Exactly.
But we didn't expect you to approve it. We knew it would fall here, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Davis.
Well, I kind of have maybe a different thought process on it. I may wind up making the members of the BZA a little happy tonight, but you know, I struggle a little bit with this one, and I'll tell you why. One reason is because I think the business is more of a destination place, being a collision center. I know I talked about the last request, and I was in support of it, and the reason being is because of the complexity of the development, and there were so many moving parts. I said that, I stated it, I stated publicly. Now you have an individual property, and you know, you have to ask yourself some questions. I've got some more of these, well, there's some overlays that are in the district I represent, and I don't want, you know, I'm looking at this, I don't want this to be used later when it comes to a matter in the district I represent. Or, you know, you have surrounding businesses that are going to come back when, when they're changed, and they're going to say, well, look, you did it for this guy, you know, I want to continue along the same path. And you just upgrade it to, back to where everybody's requesting, you know? When you look across the street, you've got a really nice development over there that complies with the UDO and it's, I mean, the overlay district, and it, and it looks nice and it's working well. You know, I want to support the council of the district and the people that live out there, but at the same time, I've got some, some other thoughts that I'm struggling with, because I know somebody's going to come back and they're going to use this case. This is an individual property, this is a large sign, I mean, why would I turn somebody else down in the same situation? I really struggle with that. So the ones that we've allowed had some complexity to them. They were large developments and a lot of moving parts, so I, I just, hopefully, nobody gets their feelings hurt or upset, but I do struggle with it.
Is that all, sir? Thank you. Counselor Allen?
I'll be brief. Counselor Huff said what I wanted to say, but the board of zoning appeals did your job. And when this kind of request comes, the council put the overlay in, the council ought to grant the variance. So you did the right thing, kicking it to us and letting us sit here and listen to the presentation, which they ought to have to do. Some people may not choose to come and petition the council to make an exception, but that's the system. That's the system we designed, and I think it's the right thing to do. I commend you for doing your job. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, any further comments or questions?
Okay, if there are no further questions, the board of zoning appeals minutes, diagrams are in the record, and council may take a vote at this time.
Motion second to approve the variance. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Oh, we've got it queued up? Okay, Bruce, never mind. Push your button.
That is granted.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison, thank you too. Yes, Counselor Woodson. What, when I get to, hang on a second. There we go. Yes, ma'am.
John, I have a request while you're here, because it just came to my mind. I have it on my list of things to do, so it's a perfect time. We need to go back and look at the sign ordinance, sign ordinance, in the sense of the signs that are placed on the building and around the building. There are a lot of the zoning we're doing, people are coming and they're building beautiful buildings in our community, but then they kill them with all these different signs all over the building and the windows and all over, and it makes the neighborhood look bad. And I'm having a hard time understanding why you want to spend $600,000, a million... all over the building and the windows and all over, and it makes the neighborhood look bad. And I'm having a hard time understanding why you want to spend six, seven, six hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, dollars on a building, then you're going to fill it, cover it up like a gift with advertisement. And I want us, and I know I mentioned it to you last year and I forgot, but I really want us to, either you get with me, or maybe we'll form a small committee, or go out there and look. And I have several pictures I can provide you. We need to do something about it because many, many times people in our community come and say, my neighbor look, my neighborhood looks so bad. We need to clean it up. These people don't live in my community, but yet they leave it messy. And we also need to look at, and I don't know if we can do that because it's private property. I don't know if we can or not, but sometimes a lot of the business, their patrons trash it. They leave the trash all over, and it spreads among the community. And I don't know if we can do anything about that because that's private property. But I think we need to look into it and, and come up with a campaign or something to ask businesses when they close, clean up your yard. You know, don't let the neighbors that live around you have to experience the garbage and everything else that's left. So I just wanted to put on your things to do so you remind me because I forgot about it, but the sign ordinance just brought it back to mind. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mayor, continuing on. Item two on our agenda is fifty-four oh four Moon Road rezoning to SFR four. It's ready for adoption.
Move approval.
Motion second to approve. Can you queue that up? All right, everybody enter your votes. Carrie's unanimous.
All right, if Mr. Bookman or the applicant is here, that has passed. Mayor, items three...
Mr. Mayor, one of them didn't call through. There it goes.
Items three and four, I'm going to call together. This would allow sales of alcoholic beverages at on-premises locations. Those that are bar pubs and others that are not normally open on a Sunday. Eating establishments with fifty percent or more food sales can be open on any Sunday, but this would allow bar pubs to be open that are not normally open either on Super Bowl Sunday, February third, or St. Patrick's Day, March seventeenth. I understand there's been some informal survey done in the uptown area preferring St. Patrick's Day, but the state law only allows this council to authorize such sales on one Sunday per year. So that's why you've got to make a choice at this time between these two different dates, but they're on the table for discussion.
Counselor Woodson.
Yes. The, the first petition was for my colleague for St. Patrick's Day, and my only reason why I brought the Super Bowl was to make sure that the, the public understand, and I'm not sure if Yvonne's here, is our, okay, you want to come forward? And the only reason I brought the Super Bowl one is because we needed to make sure that the public understood the law and how it would affect the businesses throughout the city. Why, I do represent the historic district, and I understand their wants. At the same time, we have to look at the businesses all over the city because I don't want it to come back saying, well, you did just what they did and we didn't. But the good news Yvonne's going to tell us, that it will work itself out. But that's the only reason why I brought the other one, so that she can tell us the good news. Kind of good news.
Okay, basically, what the city attorney stated as, as far as, only one event is allowed per year per state law. So whichever you vote on, St. Patrick's Day or Super Bowl Sunday, that's going to be for the entire year of two thousand and nineteen. Now, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, I'm waiting for you. I'm waiting for you to explain it, that it, how it will not affect Super Bowl.
How it will not affect what? I'm sorry.
Super Bowl for some businesses.
Okay, if the business is already approved for Sunday sales operations, meaning that their alcoholic beverage license has been approved for Sunday sales, they will not be affected by this, by this ordinance. They can be open regardless. I brought to you a copy of the, just a sample of the license, so you can see that once they are approved, we stamp Sunday sales with...
Yeah, put it on there. Yeah, put it up.
As you can see, this is just a, a copy of Red Lobster's, I'm sorry, this is just a copy of Red Lobster's alcoholic beverage license. When an establishment has been approved for Sunday sales, it is stamped approved for Sunday sales, so they're not affected by this ordinance at all. The only ones that would be affected are the establishments that we do not normally allow to be open on Sundays engaging in alcoholic beverage transactions, such as nightclubs, bar pubs, and adult-oriented establishments, and what we call non-alcohol retail establishments because they are not classified as the eating establishment.
So the eating establishment. So in other words, it won't affect none of the businesses that normally have Super Bowl in their business?
That's correct. Like restaurants, if they have been, well, restaurants automatically approved for Sunday sales because they're an eating establishment. We do, sports bar is defined as a restaurant, so if you are a sports bar, you are defined as a restaurant, so you are able to be open on Sundays. Hotel motels that has been approved for Sunday sales, you could be open on Sundays also for Super Bowl Sunday.
So the only benefit right here is for St. Patrick's Day is for those businesses that cannot be open on Sunday. It won't affect everyone. So St. Patrick's Day is the perfect day to vote for because it's not going to change anything. Just one minute. You haven't let me approve that. You should have let me make the motion.
We have a motion of second to approve the resolution to allow Sunday sales for St. Patty's Day. Is that, can we queue that up, Bruce, or is... All right, all in favor, please push the green button, and opposed, hit the red.
Because it's not going to affect, it's nothing, it's not going to affect Super Bowl at all. But I wanted it to come forward because I didn't want later, if people didn't know the law, didn't understand it, I didn't want people to come back and say, we favor one group over another group in the city. I wanted to make sure it was all clear. So we're good. So my resolution can be deleted. Counselor Woodson.
If the business has not been approved for Sunday sales, they will not be able to engage in business operations on Sundays for Super Bowl Sundays.
Correct. Okay.
And I would like to add also that New Year's Day falls on a weekday. And our ordinance states that if you, if you, if New Year's Day does not fall on a Sunday, then you will be allowed to be open until four a.m. up to New Year's Day. So with this ordinance passing, it would not affect New Year's Day because that event falls, New Year's Eve falls on a Tuesday, and New Year's Day is on a Wednesday. So New Year's Day and Eve is covered.
Thank you, Ms. Yvonne. I forgot that piece.
Okay, one, one more point on this. The item that just passed...
Hold on, hold on. Hang on, we've got a question from Counselor Huff.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Or Counselor, Counselor Davis.
You say we allow one a year, two a year? One?
One.
One per year? Okay, so when New Year's Eve is coming in on Sunday is the only time we need to worry about that again?
Right. You're going to have this again, whereas, or you're going to, which event is council going to approve?
Okay.
But I suggest we...
So Super Bowl is the only consistency in this?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But I would suggest that maybe we have our city attorney send a letter or something to our legislator to advise him that a situation can arise where two major events like this can fall on a Sunday, so that there could be an exception to the law if that should happen.
And there are already some other provisions for New Year's Eve, so we can look at those later, but they're not affect, not affected by this. There's already some exceptions for Sunday on New Year's Eve.
Can I skip Counselor Davis? I apologize. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to add, and, and I don't know what the calendar year looks like, but these two resolutions are before us. I think that, you know, my decision based more on economics than anything. I think if you're going to do this in the state, with respect that a state gives you one opportunity a year, I think that the city would want to maximize its revenue potential. I think more people will go out and probably go out on St. Patrick's Day than, than, than the Super Bowl weekend. I think people have their venue set, and, and it's just people tend to get out more. But if we're going to do this in the future, and the state allows it, I think we'd, you know, we should consider all the holidays in which the city could maximize its revenue on this, this matter.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Okay, one more point, Mayor. This, the item you just approved, these bar pubs, et cetera, that now can be open will only be open from twelve-thirty p.m. until twelve o'clock midnight, and that's under the state law. A regular restaurant, as you know, can open under, at eleven a.m. on Sunday under the other legislation the General Assembly passed called the Brunch Bill. But these establishments that you've allowed to open today on St. Patrick's Day will only be open from twelve-thirty p.m. until twelve midnight. All right?
Got it.
We need an executive session, shouldn't be too long, on personnel and litigation, Mayor, but that's all we have listed.
Okay. Any questions of the city attorney? All right, we'll move into the public agenda. And first up is Mr. John Kaminski, representing Grace Fellowship Hall. So you might be more comfortable at this podium...
He's got a lot of...
Oh, you've got some display items?
Just...
Okay, that's fine.
They are.
That's fine.
I think this is on. Well, first of all, Mayor Henderson and council members, I want to thank you for all that you do for the community in the past, and of course, in the future, and attending this session is an eye-opener for what all you do. I thank you. I'm here representing, or I am a member of the Grace Fellowship Hall here, and, and you have before you, I believe, a information about what, what we're requesting.
Sam.
And for our request, which we gave to you, I guess you're getting, getting that now, as shown in the public agenda application, we request that the Consolidated, Columbus Consolidated Government...
Thank you. First of all, my name is John Kaminski. I'm a professional engineer, have been for forty-some years here in the state of Georgia. And as a recap, some thirty-five years ago, I appeared before this council, or some form of this council, in, with Hardison Hanover in a presentation to put a bridge across the Chattahoochee, which is still pending, and I hope you'll consider it in the future.
Mr. Kaminski, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you state your, your address to go along with your name, please?
Well, the ad, the address of the...
Your residence, I'm sorry, sir.
Pardon me?
Your, your address, your residence.
My address is one zero zero three Lake Drive, Pine Mountain, Georgia.
Thank you. Please continue.
I'm here representing and am part of the fellowship of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, and the information you have in front of you is, I'll go through it, is that we're requesting that the council install a cul-de-sac at the foot of Heffahorn Way so as to comply with the current minimum standards in the uniform code. Now, the professional standards call for a cul-de-sac at, if there is any form of commercial or, or private movement, or at the least, it has to be signed correctly. And right now, there is inadequate signing for the uniform code, and we're initially requesting that to be installed. The, we, we'd like to have this done because right now, we are providing the turnaround for government vehicles, buses, as well as private citizens' access. During the interim, signing should be installed as to inform the public that the road is a dead end and a, and no turnaround is available. This is required for the uniform code. Some background in this, which is third-hand and so on, it's not, may, or may not be that accurate, but as far as I can determine, the road was originally the north-south access before Wrightsville Road was realigned and an overpass for Heffahorn Creek was built. Several accidents occurred on this road at or near the original bridge. There's a four percent grade going down the hill toward the original, where the bridge was. After the realignment, the original bridge was removed, and the road is, just ended. They just tore up the bridge and, and the road does not have an ending to it. Over the period of time, the area has developed into a now high-end subdivision. I, the Public Works Department was contacted last spring two thousand and eighteen, and the director and an assistant was appraised of our concern and request. Several telephone calls during the summer and fall indicated no progress. Finally, a Mr. K. McKee informed me that the assistant who was present was no longer part of the department, and that he now would look into the matter. After several more conversations, Mr. McKee indicated that although the Engineering Department has a design for the improvements, the matter would not be moved upon. As a sidebar, in May, we had a large event occurring at the church, and two buses, school buses, got confined into the space, and it took an hour to get extra, extra item from, from the parking area. And if this particular, I guess you really can't notice it, but the white area is a concrete area which we improved this past two years. We put a lot of, the pavement was being uprooted, and we, we improved that locally area.
Mr. Kaminski, I'm, I'm going to reset the timer, and you'll have, you'll have another five minutes to wrap up your comment.
I was not aware of that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The background there shows large trees and things like that. That is Heffahorn Creek back in that area. And to the right of that is where the road, Heffahorn Road is, and that's where the cul-de-sac should be installed. I have one more quick picture, and then, I'm just almost concluding this. This is another picture of the bus trying to get out of the area. And as a sidebar in that, the West Regional Transportation Supervisor sent a letter of apology for, for what happened at that time. The Unitarian Universalist congregation is, is very willing to help in a way to, to install the cul-de-sac in any way. We wish not to have the wooded screening now in place between the, between the existing roadway and Heffahorn Creek be disturbed. I personally would be willing to assist or work with the, both the Department of Transportation and your, your people there to have this project move ahead. Thank you for your attention. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Kaminski? Mr. City Manager, Counselor Davis?
Mr. Kaminski, I appreciate you coming. I think I, there was a request several years ago on this, and we looked into it when the church purchased the property. I think the council, this, this used to be, I think he's talking about the old FOP property out Heffahorn Way. Is that right, Mr. Kaminski?
No, that's not true. We, this is the first approach we've made to the council.
Well, no, I've been approached, I can tell you that. I've, I've been approached. Might be the first council, but I looked into it for the church.
Yes, sir.
One of the members came to me, and I think we looked into it that time, and...
It's the old FOP, yes.
What, what I remember is that it was extremely, well, it's just extremely challenging. You've got a lot of variables now. If there's anything that can be done, I know that when I looked into it, it, we looked at every angle to try to get something done there, and it was just pretty much almost impossible. You're talking about a lot of money, but even if you apply, if you're saying you apply with the UDO, you know, you'd have to put in curb and gutter and stormwater improvements and all the... and it was just pretty much almost impossible. You're talking about a lot of money. But even if you apply, if you're saying you apply with the UDO, you know you'd have to put in curb and gutter and stormwater improvements and all the rest. Now, unless there's another way to do it...
No, there's no other way to put the cul-de-sac. Number one, signing should be installed. I mean, that's a derelict of your, of the community, not having signing, saying that there's a dead end and there's no turnaround down there.
Well, it goes right into somebody's property, right into somebody, a residence that lives down there.
The road goes into the creek.
Well, the road goes right into a gate. There's a gate there. And then there's properties on the opposite side of the street, but there's a gate there with a residence. I'm pretty sure I'm right on that.
That's true, and we have the other side. We have...
And where you want it would be right at that gate, but you've got private property...
Okay. Property has to be acquired. There's no question about that. And we are willing to work with the council on this.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm open to suggestions if staff, I think staff probably, Ms. Newman, our engineer, if you remember when it was discussed. I think I'm right in what I'm saying, but I'd be glad to hear from...
Well, we can have the city engineer to come around, but you're correct, Counselor Davis. What staff has reported to me is that there are challenges with the property. There's another property owner there. There's not enough right-of-way that we would be able to go in and do it without acquiring right-of-way from the other property owner to include the church. But there are challenges with slopes and so forth, and, you know, it comes at a cost in acquiring property and construction. And I was trying to understand, in the last paragraph, you said you're very willing to help in any way to have the cul-de-sac installed. Are you saying financially?
No. Well, yes, financially indirectly because we have the land.
Okay.
We are willing to talk with you about presenting the property to put in an eyebrow cul-de-sac.
Okay, to include acquisition of any other property that's necessary to make it work?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So, City Engineer Newman, would you, I may have answered the question, but there are challenges, and there would be other, it would be necessary to acquire other property to make it work.
That is correct.
Well, I want to bring to your attention that the code says that you must have something done down in that area.
Well, I think what this is going to require is a longer discussion than just ten minutes, standing at the podium, and I don't want to, I don't want to mislead you and think we're going to resolve this tonight. What needs to happen, I believe, is for Ms. Newman to meet with you, and let's try to get all the parameters of the options and figure out what can be done. And then, from there, we'll take a look at the fiscal aspect of it, too. You deserve an answer. And so what I'd like to ask you to do, and I'll ask Ms. Newman to get with you before you leave, and y'all can schedule a time to sit down and go through it, and I know you've already been through some of this with Mr. McGee, but our head of engineering will help determine what the options are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Kind of thank you. All right. Next is Mr. Gloria Strode, representing the U.S. Census Bureau. Mr. Strode, could you state your name and your address, please?
Good evening. I am Gloria Strode, and my local address is 6904 Pebble Court, Columbus. But this evening, I'm representing the U.S. Census Bureau, the Atlanta Regional Census Center, located at 285 Peachtree Center Avenue, Atlanta. And I am your local partnership specialist, one of an awesome team, and we cover 159 counties in Georgia. And so this is just one of the many evenings that I've had the pleasure of visiting with elected officials. I do have folders for you, and I do know that it's a ten-minute. I didn't want to, this one is for the mayor. He has extra homework. All right. The mayor has extra homework. In your package, Mr. Mayor, per your request, you have the complete count committee guide and what that should look like in forming the complete count committee and selecting the liaison. You also have the response rate information by county, and it also provides you with the tracks, the census tracks. So I just wanted you to have all of that in advance so you could kind of educate yourself. What I'd like for you to do is just open up your folder, and what you will see on the right-hand side is 2020 Census at a Glance. The U.S. Census requires that each decade, we take a count or a census of the America's population. The 2020 Census goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. The Census provides vital information for you and the community. It determines how many representatives each state gets in Congress. Communities rely on census statistics to plan for a variety of residents' needs, including roads, schools, and emergency services. Businesses also use census data to provide local jobs and places to shop. Each year, the federal government distributes hundreds of billions of dollars to the states and communities based on the census data. That is the big piece. On the left-hand side, you will see what I like to call the sheet. This sheet will explain to you all of the different organizations, agencies that depend on census dollars. So for every person that goes uncounted, you'll lose $1,339 per person, per year, times ten years. That's why it's so important that we have a fair, accurate, and complete count. We're going to count everybody once and in the right place. So it's very important. Now, usually, when the census starts out, of course, it's every ten years, and I did speak to Judy before the meeting. The last decennial, Mayor Jim Wetterington appointed Judy as the Complete Counts Census Liaison. And she sat through a very long workshop to probably learn more things than probably what she wanted to. But once that has happened, the mayor, the highest elected official selects that person. We will come in and do the training to help you to understand what the complete count committee does. Usually, the first person that's reached out to is the city planning department. So if you look at the right-hand side, and this is a very quick version, you will see 2020 Census key dates. So the first person probably that reached out to somebody from the Atlanta team on the operations field side would be Rick Jones and his team because we have to have a local update of census addresses. And then, when we get to late summer or early summer, late spring, we will be looking at opening the local census office here in Columbus. In case you were not aware, over in the Savannah area is where they had the test census. This time, the census will be a little different than in 2010. You will be able to respond other than just by mail. There will be an option to respond by phone, by the internet, and by mail. So they did the trial run over on the east coast at Savannah, and so they kind of worked all the bugs out. So if you would just go to your guide, this will explain to you what's happening in field operations. The team that I work with, we are a partnership, and we work on creating awareness, educating the community, and then hosting, or assist you in hosting community events in all communities, all ethnic groups, because it's very important that everybody is what counted once and in the right place. So in communities that are hard to count, where we have language barriers or there are economic barriers, we really have to really work hard to make sure that we get everyone on board. If we do not get the best count, that will be your report card. You'll have to live with that report card for ten years. And that is the data that is used by our friends over in the education side of the community. That information is used when you're writing grants. So it's really important that we get it right. We have to get it right. So we are asking that you encourage your constituents to go to our 2020 Census jobs website. We need folks from, oh, Lord, we're probably going to need over 50,000 people. So it's not somebody keeping the job a secret. We need everybody to throw their hat into the ring. Some of the jobs will pay as much as $27.50 an hour. All of the jobs are not in the office. Some will be in the field. But we do have some wonderful technology this time, and so it's really going to be more efficient, and we're going to save the government some money. So the last decennial in 2010, Alabama, Georgia, and Florida was a part of the Atlanta Regional Census Center. Because they consolidated from twelve to six regions, Atlanta now covers Alabama, Georgia, Florida, North and South Carolina, Louisiana, and Mississippi. So if you are at a GMA meeting or an Association of County Commissioners meeting, you might see us in 100 million different places. So as I said, this is just one of the many stops that I will be having over the next two years. So if this is your first time hearing about the census, I want you to do some homework one night, whenever that is, when you have free time, whenever free time exists for you, and then just go through so you understand what happens. So we have field operations, updating the addresses. We got to know what has happened since 2010, if there are new apartments, if that structure no longer exists. All of that is very important. That information comes in Columbus from Rick Jones and his team. And the other counties that we serve, it might be coming from someone else. But you've got the operations side of the house and the partnership side of the house, but we work hand in glove to try to get the mission accomplished. So we need all hands on deck, everybody on board, because when the numbers start rolling in, and they will start rolling in in real time, Census Day is April 1st, 2020. For those that don't complete the census, then we'll have to send people out for non-response follow-up. We don't want to do that. Muskogee County, we want to get it right the first time. Because I assure you, when the numbers start rolling in and the report cards don't look good, then people will start calling around. So we want to be proactive. We don't want to be reactionary. So we're waiting for the mayor. I've spoken to him, providing him with some information. Once he decides who the liaison is, we will establish the complete count committee. But we also need community complete count committees. So since you all have constituents in your various districts, I encourage you to find someone that would head up a complete count committee in your district. So we'll have the big umbrella, and then we'll have the various ones in the district because everybody needs something different. I'm in Charmaine's District 5, so I know she's going to be working hard. But then, if you're at District 7, over where we had the event with Lefty at that time, then that's going to look a little different than what Glenn Davis might be having in his area. So that's why it's important we have the right people in the right place to help us get the message out. So in 2010, our biggest corporate partner was Aflac. They had three fabulous events. In addition to that, they appointed a census liaison at their level, not at the city level, and that person was responsible for helping us with volunteers. So when we got ready to do some of our special initiatives, I serve on that team as well. We worked with the colleges. We gave away 10,000 t-shirts at one of the football classics here in Columbus, and that required a lot of volunteers. And so you got to have people that know people that can reach out and touch. So we applaud Aflac. They were on board 2010. They're on board for 2020. And we're just ready to go, and we want you to be ready to go. Because when I go to Atlanta and the numbers are on the screen and Muskogee County comes up, I want to be able to stick my chest out like a boss. So thank you so much. I hope I didn't go over my time.
No, you're right on time, and we want you to be able to stick your chest out, too. We recognize how important an accurate count or as close to an accurate count is, and it means a lot of money, and it's the numbers we're stuck with for ten years.
For ten years.
So thank you very much, Ms. Strode, for bringing that up.
Thank you, and my card is there if you need me. It's stapled on the inside, and the jobs information is stapled on a card on the inside as well.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Hang on just a second. I'm sorry. Counselor Huff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Strode, for being here. It's hard to believe time has passed like it has.
Yes.
I was running for office for the first time during the census of 2010, and coming in, it's been, started in '11, and then I was hit with redistricting from the census.
Yes.
And picked up an additional 6,000 residents' votes at that point in time. So I'll be in contact with you because I was wide-eyed and bushy-tailed and trying to get all the information and understand what was going on.
Had a big learning curve, yes, sir.
Big learning curve, so. I understand how important it is for us as far as the dollars coming through our community and our representation. So thank you so much. Just want to thank you for being here.
Well, thank you so much, and we look forward to having the best in the state.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Ms. Strode.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just going to stay here. Yes, ma'am.
One of the things I hope we can do is get our CCG channel, and maybe you can do a segment on that with Mr. King.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. It certainly will be my pleasure. And for the mayor, I did provide the jobs announcement. And we certainly need people with all skills, not just technology. We need clerks, and it's a major operation. And so we are blessed that this time Columbus will have a local census office because there were some in 2010 that will not be in 2020. And so we can be looking forward to that, too, late spring or early summer. They never give us an exact date because we work for the government, so. We just have to kind of roll.
Counselor Woodson.
Ms. Strode, I wanted to ask you because the mayor already gave me a phone call in reference to the census on how we can communicate with the Latino community
Yes, ma'am.
because of what happened in 2010.
Yes.
Is any of this information that explains the importance of the census in Spanish, do you know?
Yes, we have a lot of information in various languages.
Okay.
And so we can request some of that from Washington, D.C.
Okay.
And when we get that back, I can get that to you. And that is why the hiring is so important. If you could just see our team in Atlanta, we have people that speak all languages. And on this team that I'm on, in Miami and in other places, we actually even have a person that works specifically with Native Americans because everybody can't go on that property. So we have people that, from the other languages, and we do have that. So because you have requested that, then I can send that up to a Dr. Mack, who is my supervisor, and then we can just request that from Washington.
Can we ask him, too, if we can get some information, like in Korean, Asian Pacific? Because even though we don't see them, we have a large community.
We do.
And we can get it into their churches and the Somali community. This is when the mayor talked to me. I was just thinking about it, and I thought, well, the way this community is, I think the easiest way, if we can get something simple, to the point, where we can get it to the ministers and the preachers that can be at their pulpit or can assign someone from their church to help with the census. So if you can, I know we have a small German community.
Yes.
The Asian community, the Hispanic community. So I think if we can get some of the various languages so that we can somehow get some volunteers or so to help penetrate these different small, little churches within the community with something a little bit, not so extent, but to the point.
Right.
So that we can start gearing them up to understand that people that go to your church have a need.
Absolutely.
This is the time for you to participate and encourage your members to participate on something that will affect their lives.
Absolutely, and I was telling the mayor that. That's why it's important that when you put the complete count committee together, you have a representative from all of those communities because they can better tell us what they need, and we can try to get those things. But in some of our broader or larger communities, Miami and some of the other ones, they have so many different ethnic groups that the Census Bureau, we have all of that. But we want to make sure when we order things that we're really going to use those because everything is about being a good steward and managing budgets.
Well, suffice it to say, we're going to have a plan. We're going to access the materials and the resources so that we can get everybody involved.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I just ask because I already got that phone call.
Right, yes. He told me I've been speaking to some people. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One last comment. Counselor Crabbe?
It seems like what you're saying, that, you know, having all different nationality, I mean, not nationalities, but languages and everything. It seems complicated. And so it seems like who we choose needs to really know this community.
Agreed. Agreed. Good point. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Also, Mayor, one more thing. We do have census in the schools. It's now called statistics in the schools. And we rely on the children with the second language to take the information home to the parents. So that's another one of the initiatives. Because we do work in the schools. Because we rely on the children to be our ambassadors as well. So that's something that's very helpful where we have that second language.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Avis Lewis, representing Mama Love Aid and People.
Y'all moved a podium.
I'm sorry. Good evening. And just take your name and your address, please.
My name is Avis Love Lewis. My address is, well, I can't use my home address because the mailman gave 11 pieces of my mail to somebody down the street. So I'm going to get my 4012 Hamilton Road slash 4075. You can send it to me there, anything. And before I get started, I want to also say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know who I'm thanking, but somebody sent flowers for Christmas to me. Maybe they're listening to this meeting. So I want to say whoever you are, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay? I want to talk about, I was looking, I was looking at the TV to your government, to, well, it wasn't your government channel. I was looking at TV and a program came on. So I want to say this. I would like to say, and they don't know who I am. I would like to say, I pray and I forgive my loved ones, like they said, to my friends, like they said. But I think they forgot to say, I don't know, but I'm going to say, I also forgive. I pray for and I forgive my enemies. Because we're required to do that, you know? So I want to also say, okay. I'm just going to read this. You already read it. And it's very self-explanatory. Meeting false preachers. I'm going to read it again. Meeting false preacher. It's very self-explanatory. If you want to know more information on it, you got plenty of translation called the Bible. Okay. I would like to see all citizens, not just preachers, be given an opportunity in continuing to make Columbus, Georgia, better. To make Columbus, Georgia, and all people living here in Columbus, Georgia, very prosperous. And by doing that, I hope and pray that talk to the mayor will continue. It gave people of all diversity an opportunity. Whether they took it or not, it gave them an opportunity to speak to the mayor. And when I did go to the meeting, it was packed, jam-packed. And it got that diversity in it. And when you have diversity, you get some great ideas. Because everybody have not walked in the same shoes. I may be walking some shoes, you haven't. You may be walking some shoes, I haven't. And when you walk in certain shoes, you learn things. And that's what I would like to see. Also, I would like to see with that CCG TV, a list of every meeting here in Columbus, Georgia, that each one of you will be attending, listed there, along with the date and the time. And also, along with whether it's a closed meeting or a public invited meeting. And maybe if it's a closed meeting, you can explain a little note why this is a closed meeting. I would like to see that right there. Because I do know some people look at the government channel. And I see that you're hiring for policemen. I see you're hiring for bus drivers. I see this and that. Maybe a little portion of that could be allowed for that each month, you know? And I'm sure openness is next to garden in this. So I don't mind telling people if I got a meeting. What is that, almost my first five minutes?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to reset your time for another five minutes.
Okay. I would like to see that. You know, diversity and feeling inclusive of people. Because you never look down on nobody. Because you don't never know when you got to look up and they're the person to help you. Okay. Also, my daughter said I'm hard to hear. She had me going to a hearing doctor. And he said I was okay. So the next time she told me that, I said, I do just like y'all young folks. I have selective hearing. I hear what I want to hear. But I don't, I'm hoping, and maybe I'm not the only one, I can't hear Ms. Evelyn Turner. Pew. Is there anything you can get that's for a disabled person? So maybe her voice will come out a little louder, you know? Think about that. Okay. I want to say this. Could you put my little thing up for me, sweetheart? It's up already? I don't see it. My little paper? There it go. I know they say, they declared Black History, the shortest month of the year. But I don't care what they declare. Because when God give me this feeling, I'm going to use what I want to use. This is for, I would carry this one a month, you know, I carried the other one. And since I've been carrying this, people know who Jesus is. They know who Marla Tequín is. But everyone do not know who Claudette Carvin was, is, because she still living. But I met the young lady back there, and she did her paper on her when I, she saw that. She said, I did my paper on her. That was wonderful. Made me feel good that she knew who she was. But like I say, people should get to know their history. Because sometimes if you don't know your history, you might repeat it. And it's not a good thing. So I'm going to leave y'all with this. My time is almost up. I'll leave you with this. You saw that one. And I'm going to leave you with this. And I hope and pray, because I do, about everything, you know? And I'm not talking to you because I'm perfect. Because I'm definitely not, you know, sometime, I'm not perfect. I'll leave it like that. Thank y'all very much. Everybody have a blessed, blessed, blessed 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And I will tell you that we have not scheduled any dates, but we will continue to talk with the mayor. I think it's a good thing that the previous mayor started, and it gives us an opportunity to interface with the folks that are in the community. So we'll let you know when the dates are set.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll look at the TV and see, do I see him?
We'll put him there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Palmore? Ms. Palmore, you know, if you don't mind, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Audrey Holston-Palmore. I currently reside at 1035 Lawyer's Lane. I am offering greetings to the elected Public Safety Director, Mr. Barry Henderson, and the selected City Manager, Isaiah Hugley, and citizens of Columbus, Georgia. I applied to appear on today, Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, public agenda on last Friday, January the 18th, 2019, as the requirement states. The purpose for my appearance is to reveal the agreeable schedule meeting times for meetings I have, for my meetings I have sought with the Public Safety Director of the Columbus Consolidated Government, presently serving the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. On the screen, on the prompt to my right, the meeting was held in the lobby of this building on January the 8th, after the agreement was made with the Public Safety Director slash Mayor, Mr. Henderson. His assistant or representative, Mr. Richard Bishop, I believe his name is, according to the information that he signed. Because he said that there would not be any notification of the meeting via the U.S. Postal Service. So he wrote on my public agenda, on my schedule, the mayor agenda for January the 8th. He did write Mr. Richard Bishop representing the Public Safety Director slash Mayor Barry Henderson. Hello? He did write that on February the 12th, in this year, 2019, there will be a meeting with the Public Safety Director at 4:00 PM in the mayor's office, which is located on the sixth floor of the government center, the government building. And I just wanted the public to be aware of the fact that finally, the Public Safety Director is agreeing to meet with me about the concern that I actually exposed to the public December 2017 and throughout the year of 2018. So I'm really looking forward to the meeting. Also, also, another purpose for my appearance is to expose or reveal to the Columbus, Georgia citizenry, an agreeable scheduled meeting time for my meeting I have sought with the City Manager of the Columbus Consolidated Government, Isaiah Hugley, who is also presently serving the citizens of Columbus. This meeting, as you can see, was agreeable, it was agreed for us to meet according to Crystal Farley. That's where the CF.
Ms. Palmore, I'm going to reset the clock for five more minutes for you now.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
The CF is the representative that, oh, thank you. Isaiah Hugley sent in the foyer on January the 8th. And due to the fact that the U.S. Postal Service is not available, for whatever reason, I'm not quite sure of why the information was not sent to me as requested via the U.S. Postal Service. So I'm bringing it to the public for verification that there will be a meeting with Mr. Isaiah Hugley and myself, scheduled for February the 14th at 11:00 in the City Manager's Office, which is also located on the sixth floor, if you've never been there, at 11:00 AM. And if you need a copy of this, I'd be willing to share it with you. If you perhaps could call the Clerk of Counsel and, you know, just request that you want me to send you a copy. I'll do the best that I can to make sure that you have it. But this will be shown over and over again, CGTV, until the actual meeting date of February 12th with the Public Safety Director, Mr. Henderson. I will be very pleased to see any citizens of the Columbus, Georgia residency present. I am very transparent. I am transparent about the affective reason for my concerns. Thank you for your attention. I'm looking forward to meeting with both city officials. And if there are any questions at this time, I'd be willing to take any comments or questions anyone in the room may possibly have.
Any questions? Ms. Palmore, thank you. Ms. Palmore, I took it to mean that your comments were finished. So you have something else to say, ma'am?
I want you to recognize that this is the official secretary of Richard Bishop. And I didn't think that I made up to see where he had originally stated 2:00 that it was recommended by Crystal Farley, that he changed it to 4:00. So I'm looking forward to getting there. And if there are any citizens that would like to come, I'm sure they'll kind of reduce. If the space is not adequate, given the mayor's office, then perhaps if we move it to another location within the building. And right here on 14th. And right here on 14th at 11:00 AM, I'm looking forward to meeting with Mr. Hugley. So, he had stated that the issue had been resolved, but had given limitations on what it is that I would be able to speak about, in terms of the events that happened that has caused me this great concern. But one thing I want to commemorate is the fact that it affected not only me, but because I was there, I was invited there. And so, what I say at the meeting will be reflected upon the negative mental anguish that has been endured since the event happened in March.
Ms. Palmore, your time is up. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Alamein, welcome.
Thank you. There should be 22 copies there. Well, Teresa Alamein, 3911, Steam Mill Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for accommodating the little faux pas around my being on the public agenda. I did sign up two weeks ago. And I want to start out by saying congratulations to Mr. City Manager. I was there yesterday morning, and what a wonderful story to hear about your beginnings. And it was so great of you to share that on that special day. And congratulations, well deserved. I'm here to keep a promise. When I spoke before City Council last, under the previous administration, I promised that I would come back in January about the issue of the crime prevention grant money. And I just want to say that I requested the records for all of those years, 2013, 14, 15, 16, and 17. And I was provided about 10 pounds of records from the Clerk of Council's office, which gave all of the contracts, because they aren't grants, they're contracts. And that's what I learned. So, the contracts between either the City Manager and the mayor, and the various agencies that were granted monies out of the crime prevention dollars, because every man, woman, and child in this county puts that one cent in every time they buy something that's taxed. So, it's our money. It's our money. And my whole point about this is that agencies from Atlanta should not be able to come into Columbus and take money out of here. And I focus on the Georgia Appleseed Agency, and that's what you have before you, is their contract, which was fully executed, signed by the City Attorney, signed by the City Manager, and signed by the Executive Director, Sharon Hill. Sharon Hill told me in June 2017 that she was leaving Georgia Appleseed. But that was with the knowledge that Teddy Reese and the guy who was the project director, Rob Rose, the person I knew best, also had put in their resignations. When I asked for, I put in an application, and this is how it all came about, city officials. I put in an application for crime prevention money. I have never applied for public money before. But because the situation is so dire, I applied for the crime prevention grant money. Spent a lot of time talking to Seth Brown, because my tendency is not to apply for anything unless I think I'm really going to get it. So, when I talked to Seth Brown, he saw the program, he saw the video, he thought it was great. And I told him I was going to probably ask for around $22,000, $25,000. That's exactly what I did. And so, when it went before the Crime Prevention Board, the Crime Prevention Board decided only $13,000. Well, that clearly was not enough for the project I was trying to do. So, I appealed to Ms. Lorraine Dixon Moore to give me that $8,400 that they left on the cutting floor. That was what was left over. It almost would have gotten me to the 22. She said, "No." Chair of the Crime Prevention Board, I came before you, and I appealed to you before the vote took place that June, and you said in silence, no response. So, I began to start looking into the crime prevention money. And my feeling about it, as I said at the time, was that it was the most incestuous, unethical patronage scheme I had ever seen dealing with public dollars. And I say that because Tripp Tomlinson was on the board of Georgia Appleseed. I confronted Mayor Tomlinson directly about that fact. And at the time I did, she said, "Well, he's no longer on the board." But he was on that board when they came in here and started taking this money. And so, in June of 2017, Georgia Appleseed walked away and left all the children, all the stuff they promised to do in that contract, Mr. City Attorney, I think you should be able to get your money back, actually. All of the promises that they made in that contract walked away. Now, the thing that is really disturbing, that at the last council meeting, when I was here, and the mayor called Seth Brown in to defend the contract with Georgia Appleseed, Seth Brown stood here and said, "Teddy Reese told him that he quit because he got tired of being on the road so much." It's in the record, it's on the camera. And I contacted the mayor that very same day and said, "Did you hear what Seth Brown said? Because there is nowhere you go in Muskogee County that you can't be home in time for dinner. But if you're traveling to Savannah, where Georgia Appleseed has an operation, you might need to stay overnight." So, what did they do with our money? That is the fundamental question to be answered. And I'm still calling for an investigation of that. You have the records, I have the records. Now, Lindsey, one more thing, because I do want to say that because Georgia Appleseed left and left the children high and dry, I just want to give you this last document, which shows how long I have been working on this issue of building a village and closing the school-to-prison pipeline since 2012. That flyer is a copy of the very first meeting that was held around building a village. The back of that flyer is the sign-in sheet from that meeting. You probably recognize some of those folks. But more importantly, we had a second meeting in September. And in September, it was a call-to-talk meeting, which was the much bigger meeting with lots of partners in education there. And then, on October 26th, the mayor, recognizing the significance of this project, sent me the little card. I've kept that little card over all these years. Here's her little card that she sent me. So, what you have is a copy of the card. Gave her the Building a Village Visionary Award. Remember, Councilmember Woodson, you were there to accept it for her on November 15th? And finally, I just want to say thanks to Councilmember John House, who comes out to everything. I don't know if you know this, but Councilmember House comes out to everything in the community. I don't see how he and Marilyn managed to do it. But Councilmember House came out on January 14th, where we had our 2019 Building a Village Planning Meeting at Golden Corral. Golden Corral is one of our partners, and I won't say on camera what the good rate they give us, but we feed people our meetings, do we not, Councilmember House? We feed people. And so, we had a great meeting there, and everybody enjoyed themselves, but we also came out with some commitments, did we not? And so, we have some commitments for building a village. So, I will apply for the crime prevention money again. It's a bigger project now. So, it's more than just a spice program. It is bigger than that, because the village is everything south of Macon Road, and it takes in all six of those lowest-performing schools, Dorothy Height, Thomas Brewer, Martin Luther King Jr., J.D. Davis, Baker Middle School, and the Rothschild Leadership Academy. That, those are the schools that are the lowest performing in this district. The majority of students at all those schools are failing. That is in the village. There are other schools, but those are the schools where the school-to-prison pipeline is the most prevalent. So, I do want you to know that I'm committed to this community. And so, I'll stand here to see if anybody has any comments, because you do have the information. When I come before you, I come before you with information that I get from your own records.
Ms. Alamein, I appreciate it. And I don't, are there any questions or any comments, Ms. Alamein? Mr. Hugley, City Manager?
No, I don't have any questions at this time, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had your light on. Counselor Pew. Do I now? I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Pew.
I don't have any questions of her, but I would ask the City Attorney, if he can check, I assume you're saying that the contract that Appleseed had was us...
They did not live up to it.
They stopped providing services at some point in time during the year.
And I will, I will say, we have a presentation coming, I think, possibly due to some of your earlier requests and comments in December. We did ask the, or the council asked the internal auditor to take a look at the money that went to that program, and there will be a report, I think, the first meeting in February, given an accountability of that.
I look forward to it.
So, you'll have some answers then, for sure.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Really appreciate you. I can see it's a different atmosphere, and I appreciate how kind you are, because people in the community, those of us who have mental illnesses, some of us function at a pretty high level, but we want to remove the stigma of people being able to come before this council, in spite of whatever their abilities are. And I really appreciate you answering that longstanding request from the previous speaker.
Well, I appreciate it. I would love to take credit for it, but I believe they had put that in motion before I got here, but thank you.
Well, that's good to know, but it's happening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a provision in all of our contracts that would provide, that addresses the situation if they get a contract or a grant is awarded? And if they pull out at some point during the year, is there anything addressed?
Non-performance clause?
Well, non-performance and just if they pull out and leave Columbus.
Mr. City Attorney?
In all of these agreements, they have to issue a monthly report to Mr. Brown of the Office of Crime Prevention, and maintain records, and keep the records for three years, and they're subject to audit by the state auditor and our internal auditor here. So, I mean, monthly reports lets you know what's going on, as supposed to, anyway.
So, what happens if I got a grant from the City of Columbus, crime prevention grant, and after I've done it for three months, I decide I don't know, I'm doing it, I just leave? What happens?
Well, then, the remaining portion of the funds would revert back to the Office of Crime Prevention, and, you know...
They're not distributed all of this money, the total grant money is not distributed at the beginning.
Right, he would still hold on to part of the money, Mr. Brown's here, but I mean, his office would keep whatever money had not been appropriated, distributed to the agency.
Mayor Protem, I was listening to you in the back. No, they, what, they get a monthly check. So, basically, what happens is, let's say, and we had a situation last year, where a program could no longer continue their program because of staffing, and we cut the funding off immediately. Now, they had performed up until that point, but at that point, they could no longer, a lot of the programs that we fund, we don't, well, all of them, we don't do any overhead, we fund the program itself. So, if there comes a situation where they can no longer take care of their overhead, well, their program doesn't exist anymore. So, we had heard some milling around in the community, and then I met with the program that we're, that I'm using as a reference, and they had said, yeah, they were probably going to have to shut down in the next two months. And I said, "Well, let's continue to discuss this, and look at your program, and see how we are in a month, and then we'll look at 30 days out." And sure enough, they were unable to continue, and at that point, we stopped funding. The reason we don't do any longer than one year, or any more than a month at a time, is because of that. It's a control mechanism. So, we can know way ahead of time, okay, this program's not going to be able to meet their requirements, so we cut it off at that point. And we've had one program that happened to, and there was no money, I don't like to use the word "lost," but it all went back in the till. So, and it doesn't go back to us, it goes into the lost fund, and we don't have access to it. We're a $0 budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, appreciate it. And there will be a full report coming from our internal auditor, I guess, in about three weeks. So, we'll look forward to that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the City Managers. I'm sorry, we got a couple more council members. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I just wanted to just make an announcement to congratulate some people in our community that is making Columbus even shine even more. Georgia Turin had today their 100 Most Influenced Georgian, and the Georgian of the Year. And the wonderful thing about it, I went to support a colleague from another organization, and while I was there, I found out that four individuals from our community had received the award. And that was Brian Anderson from the Chamber of Commerce, the president and CEO, was recognized; Dan Amos from Aflac was recognized; Christopher Markwoods from CSU was recognized; and U.S. Senator Johnny Isensen was recognized in our community for their outstanding contribution, not only to our community, but Georgia as a whole. And I thought it was very important for me to mention that as we try to get our city to shine more and more and more, that we are being recognized for a lot of accomplishments that we have done in the city of Columbus and so forth. Also, I found it very interesting, and it was really great, because we had a presentation here before us, and I was like, "Okay." I didn't really understand the magnitude of that presentation, and that was our film industry in Georgia. And the young lady that won it worked for the state of Georgia, her name is Leigh Thomas, she won it for the year. And she was telling us the history of it, and the amount of money that has been brought into communities who have and are ready for the film industry. And they mentioned many other communities, and when she said that, I thought to myself... And they mentioned many other communities, and when she said that, I thought to myself, I'll be proud in a couple of years if they mention Columbus, Georgia, because we had a presentation here, and they were speaking about Columbus itself and Fort Benning. So, I just wanted to bring that forward because I thought it was important for us to know that Georgia Trend really looks at Columbus when we had four individuals there to be recognized for their accomplishments.
No, I think that's very appropriate. Thank you for doing that. We, we're very blessed with some pretty strong leadership, particularly out of the private sector, which has long been one of the primary drivers of this community. So, thank you for bringing that up, Counselor. Mayor Protem?
And I would also like to add my congratulations, starting at here when the meeting first started, to our city manager for his award this weekend. I mean, Monday.
Absolutely.
We all deserve it.
Thank you. While you're thanking people with the mic on, it's your agenda.
Thank you, sir. And it's, the hour is getting late. So, Mr. Mayor, what I would like to do is postpone a few of the updates that's listed at the end of my agenda. I'd like to postpone the census update, the transportation update, and the road maintenance pothole repair work order process.
We've got a work session next week. It'd be a great time to bring them back.
Yes, sir. We'll bring all that back next week. And so, with that, I've got a couple of donations. I've got Northern Little League donation of batting cages upgrade.
Motion in a second to accept the Northern Little League donation, all in favor. Please enter your vote. It passes?
Yeah.
Motion in a second to accept the donation to scoreboards for Pioneer Little League. Please put it up on the screen. There's all, everybody enter their vote. All in favor, hit green. We have, I'm sorry, we may have a, got a, I can't get to you. There we go. Counselor Thomas had a comment before.
I just wanted to say, I, we've, we sort of went over those two very quickly, but I, I do want to make sure that the community understands that Northern Little League and Pioneer Little League made these donations, that they will enhance the parks and the stadiums where these kids play their ball. And they certainly didn't have to do this, but we certainly do appreciate this, both of these quite expensive for the Little Leagues because they have to make up this money. This is either from sign up, signups or pledges or whatever, and so, I, I just don't want us to skip it too quickly.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you're here.
And I know that there's some people sitting around this table who've had kids that were in the Northern Little League or the Pioneer Little League, and they haven't said anything. So, I felt compelled to make that.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much. And, and it, you know, it's just another example of the partnership that we have with a lot of, a lot of the different entities throughout the community. That's, it's a great partnership. Thank you. I think we, did we call the vote? That's already passed?
Yes, sir. On the purchases, I've got a federal reimbursement recovery services for the sheriff's office.
Does anybody want to pull one of the purchases? They have all been moved for approval and seconded. Counselor, Counselor House?
I don't want to pull it, but I just have one question.
Sure.
On the bulletproof vest for the fire department, are we going to equip all of the ambulance personnel with vests and helmets? Is that what that's going to do, or is it only a partial?
That money was part of a Department of Justice grant that will allow us to outfit ten trucks to get medics to the scene of active shooter victims much quicker than we can now.
Okay.
Right now, we have to wait until police clear the building, which could take hours.
Sure.
But with the new program that we want to initiate in conjunction with the police department and sheriff department, we'll outfit those medics, and under the law enforcement security, we can get the medics to the victims a lot quicker. And that, that's the purpose of that. We want to outfit all of the trucks, but that was part of a Department of Justice grant, so, or at least it's a start.
I fully support it. Just was curious how much we were buying. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Davis. You know, and I, I would guess that with that comes a lot of extra training that goes along with that as well.
Yes, sir. The police department, they fully support it. They've offered to assist us with training, and the sheriff has also offered to assist us in training our personnel. We want to make sure that they're well-trained before we put them in that situation.
Thank you. Yeah, it, yeah. We appreciate everything that y'all do. Appreciate the, the police department, what they do with the training as well. And I know we've got a motion second to approve, but I'm going to ask City Manager to run through all of the items, just so that the public knows what we are going to be approving.
We've got federal reimbursement, recovery services, TASER training cartridges for police department, training ammunition for police department, bulletproof vests, and helmets for fire EMS, hay straw blower, aluminum trench box, elevator maintenance services, recruitment advertising services, steel signal strain poles, mobile automatic license plate reader, video management software for police department, repair of a fire truck, and new baseball, excuse me, basketball floor for Civic Center.
Okay. Been, the, the entire slate of purchases has been moved and seconded, so we'll put that up there and allow the counselors to enter their votes, please. Purchases passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have the finance director come up, and this is related to a Superior Court clerk update, a request from our new Superior Court Clerk, Danielle Forte, who is here, and she can also come forward, but our finance director will start out and explain what's going on with this.
Yes. Our newly-elected Superior Court Clerk has desires to make some position, some personnel changes within the office. We have worked with the clerk to determine how she can make these changes so that it is, in fact, budget neutral, and her request is budget neutral. We are, and that, we're going to use existing salary savings to, from a funded vacant deputy clerk one position, as well as reducing some of the part-time hours for the two part-time employees that she has to facilitate this request. But what the court, what the clerk has requested is that she hire in one assistant chief deputy clerk above the step C. You know, that requires council approval, and we have a resolution here tonight for that approval.
And so, Ms. Mayor and Counsel, in a nutshell, in order to bring in, to make the personnel changes she's attempting to make, as the finance director has said, it's budget neutral, she is willing to unfund a deputy clerk position and reduce the part-time hours of her two part-time people to make it budget neutral where there's no change in, in salary. And, and so, what would happen, once through attrition, other people leave, and she's able to go back and fund the deputy clerk and put the hours of the part-time people back, she would then do it at that time and that time only, and she would still be, her budget, there would be no change up or down in her budget at that time. If anything, it would be reduced, but certainly not more. And we have met with her and talked with her, and she's presented this proposal, and we, we, we've determined it would be budget neutral.
Okay. And we do have, we've, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I see.
We had a second, but we have discussion. I know Counselor Thomas has comment.
I, I want to support this, but I'm a little hesitant. And the reason I am is that I see where the salary savings could pay for it this year. This is an ongoing position, however.
True.
And so, how are we going to pay for it next year and the following year and so forth? I just...
So, it's a redirection of the salary money, essentially.
But Mr. City Manager said that that position would be filled through attrition.
Well, and that would, that could be four years or five years from now.
And it could be anywhere.
Well, if, if she can show that there's no change up, an upward change in her personnel schedule, and so, the position would be unfunded for as long as it is necessary that she would not increase her salaries in her department, and she understands that.
And as I said, I really want to, I really want to support this because I know that, that she needs this, but I, I am real hesitant about funding positions with salary savings that are not absolute salary savings. If this position were eliminated, I wouldn't have a problem with it at all.
Well, let me make this, this clear. She, if she didn't, if you don't do what she's presenting to you, then she's going to go ahead and fill the deputy clerk position so that you still, there is no savings. The position is funded, and she can hire that person tomorrow. And she's saying, I'm going to unfund or freeze that position and use the money for what I'm trying to do, and I will never fill that position if we don't through attrition. In other words, you know, we've got other people there who are nearing retirement who are way out on the scale, and when those people leave and, and she can use the difference to fund that position and not increase her salary schedule, then she would do it at that time.
All right. And I think the concern is probably for years later.
Yeah.
But I understand that that will remain unfunded, and that then it is subject to budgetary constraints. It still has to fit within the budget. So, the only way that I see that she could ever go back and fill that without exceeding her budget would come back during the budget process or come and act as a budget exemption.
Exactly. That's right.
And, and as I said, I really want to support it, but I'm, I'm real nervous.
I got you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any other discussion? Well, this is not on the agenda, I don't think. Is it? Oh, it is? So, we can, all right, let's, let's...
Yes, sir. It's on as an update.
Right.
And you can approve it tonight, or we would bring it back if...
I think there's a motion in a second. Can you put it up on the screen, Bruce? All right, there's a motion second, so all those in favor, please press green. Those opposed, plus red. Madam Clerk, it is passed. Thank you for your patience, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, I've got an update from election and registration. It's the fiscal year nineteen, a fiscal year nineteen funding request, and I believe it's due to the runoff election, and Ms. Nancy Boren is here tonight.
Yes. Pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, anytime a department expects to exceed their budget appropriations, they must come before council and request additional funding. In reviewing the budget of elections and registrations with the director, Ms. Nancy Boren, we have determined that about an additional seventy-five thousand dollars in appropriations is needed, and this is due to the runoff elections that occurred in December. I don't know if council recalls, but Mrs. Boren did come before the budget review committee advising that she could possibly need additional funding if there was a runoff in, in December.
Well, just out of curiosity, where's that funding coming from?
Well, right now, it would be reserves, but in all likelihood, based on the current trends of the budget, we could cover it from other, other areas.
Okay. We've got a motion second, and we've got discussion from Counselor Davis.
I think this definitely fits into the budgetary requirements, but what's happening tonight is it's being recommended by the city manager and the mayor, so that is appropriate according to the guidelines. I know the circumstances, I'm in support.
Okay. All right. There's a motion second. Can we cue that one, Bruce? Counselors, please register your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Boren, for your patience. I got you. Counselor Barnes?
I just want to say, Nancy, during the election process, you all did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
So many of the, the people that you had that volunteered, working the long hours. I came through a couple of times, and it, it just comes, matriculates down from the leadership, because everyone I asked, I know it was long hours, they said, we don't mind, we appreciate the system. So, that, that speaks a lot of, not only them, but it speaks a lot of you as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes. Counselor Woodson?
Nancy, just want to, perhaps just remind me, just want to relate to your message from a young Hispanic, young lady who participated this year for the first time on our voting process and was at the polls and stuff. And she said it was the most enlightening and educational, and she would like to continue doing it. She was going to encourage some of her friends, too. She said that the training, the people, it was just fantastic.
That's great to hear.
And I forgot to tell you, so I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine. We try to partner with Carver High School so they get new students in and try to build that appreciation for the process, so I appreciate that.
And, and this is a young college student.
Mm-hmm.
She also works with me, and she was just telling everyone how you should do your civic duty and, and stuff, so just wanted you to know.
Thank you. I would like to come back and update council when we know if or when we will be getting new voting equipment. As you know, it's before the legislature now to come up with funding and then to determine the system. So, once that's determined, I'd like to come back and give a briefing to council.
Absolutely. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, next, I've got a home inspection additional certification update from Director John Hudgerson.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I've got eleven slides. I'm going to try to zip through them here. This, this was asked by Counselor Craft to kind of look at these recommend, look at these requirements, kind of see what was going on, see if we needed to update them and, and go back through. Ideally, a lot of this is through business license, but some of the requirements are, end up kind of mixing with my department, so we just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. So, quickly, I'll go through definitions, kind of the existing prerequisites, and then the suggested changes. All right. So, to kind of shorten that, I'll just read the underlying section, which is the home inspector means any person who inspects and reports on the condition of a home or family dwelling, grounds, roof, exterior surface, garage, carport, structure, attic, basement, crawl space, all those things, or any combination thereof for prospective purchase or seller. So, that part is typically, obviously, about the real estate part, when you're finalizing your home, about to closing your house, you, you know, you call a home inspector to come in and perform services before you, you know, sign on the dotted line. So, typically, the city does not get involved in this other than the business license classifying people in the city as home inspectors. I started doing the research. Home inspection, unfortunately, it's not, there's not a full regulation of what you have to be. I called other municipalities, checked with other areas. It's not, there was a state, I think it was back in two thousand and seven, they tried to make a move to kind of standardize it and have a state requirement to be a home inspector, you had to meet these requirements, but it was unfortunately vetoed by then-Governor Deal. No, Sonny Perdue, I'm sorry, because that was two thousand and seven. So, he, it was vetoed at that point, and we really hadn't heard anything else since. So, right now, there's no pre-licensing or continuing it, and from what we can find, there's eighteen individuals and companies licensed in Columbus as of last year. We did a few Google searches these last couple of days, so some people may see us at their doors because there's some businesses that are operating that have not been listed. So, we will be making some visits here shortly. So, the prerequisites, not going to really go through all of that. That's just telling you all, that's what's currently in the ordinance. Two-thirds of those companies either don't exist anymore, have gone bankrupt, you know, attrition, companies have bought other companies, so a lot of those do not exist anymore. So, ideally, when they come in the first time to, to meet with Yvonne, to get their... So ideally, when they come in the first time to meet with Yvonne, to get their business license, they have to provide us one of those certifications. But obviously, like I just said, a lot of those are outdated. And then after that, then, you know, general liability, workman's comp, any disclosure to the home, the consumer, whether they have any errors or omissions, anything like that. And then also, we additionally ask for additional, one letter of recommendation from a bank, and two letters of recommendation from an architect, engineer, contractor, or anybody of the sort in that field. So just kinda going by what we suggest to change, we wanna revise the credentials, require continuing ed upon business license renewal, and to remove the letters of recommendation. A lot of people who wanna start this business, they don't have the recommendation from a contractor or a bank, 'cause if you've never, if you're starting this business, you wouldn't have that. So a lot of people, it's hard, or the bank won't give them any type of recommendation. They'll just say, "Hey, you have a bank account here," but that's not necessarily a recommendation that, so we wanted to take that out. What we started to look at is, as I'm X all of those out, we started inspecting those companies and those names, and they don't exist anymore. So ideally, we don't want any outdated requirements that are still on the books if we can get rid of them. The SBCCI, combined with three other co-companies, become the International Co-Council. ASHI was, used to be the American Inspector Society. Nahy got bought out by this other company called Internechi. The Georgia Association of Home Inspectors, like I said, all of these different companies have kinda cobbled together and moved around and changed names, so. But we did wanna add a clause in there. Anything not listed by the above organizations will be reviewed and evaluated by inspectors and codes department prior to issuance of business license. So we don't have to keep coming to do this. If it's a new company that comes along, then we'll be able to come in and just, as long as we can approve it, make sure they meet the requirements. One thing we did wanna add is some new verbiage for renewals. Right now, if you just say that you're a part of any of these old companies, whether they exist or don't, there's no really a check and balance on it. So we're requiring them now to at least provide us at least four hours of continuing education. We checked with the City of Augusta, they're one of the only other cities I found that actually had another CEU requirement. The other ones kinda just, they're a real gray area as to what they require. And the last thing there is to remove the letters of recommendation. Like I said, it's just, if you're starting that business, you're not gonna have a recommendation from a bank, and like I explained before. So we didn't think that was necessarily anything to really check on, but if we know that they're continuing to get the continuing education, we know that they're staying on top of their memberships, because all four of those organizations require you to have continuing ed to continue your membership. So when you're bringing in your membership, you've gotta continue to get the education so we know that they're at least staying up on new technologies and things like that. So if they do have to come in new houses that somebody may have gotten a certification back in nineteen ninety, and things have changed, and we're in twenty nineteen, at least they know they've had to get continuing education to meet that requirement. So, so this is kinda, the city's Columbus is kinda dependent on these local requirements, like I explained, because the state of Georgia really doesn't have anything in stone as to what they require. And like I said, we checked with other jurisdictions similar to my size. I sent things out to the BOAG, the Building Officials Association of Georgia, got responses back from them, and they've been very limited. They say if you just get a business license, because the state doesn't have a overarching thing. So we just felt it was something that would be good for us while we're at least looking at updating the things and make sure we have at least something in there for continuing education, so we make sure the people out there are doing a quality job. And that's it.
All right, any questions? Counselor, Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm, I've always been puzzled by this vocation. There was a flood of individuals early on, years ago, that wanted to get into this business, and the lack of experience, I guess you could say, was the roadblock. And that's the concern I have now, is changing this, we get back in the same situation where my concern is someone gets in the business and takes advantage of a homeowner. Could you possibly pull the two thousand and eight legislation to see what criteria the state was looking at that maybe we could implement? I can pull that. I understand there's a lot of associations or certifications.
They had ninety, for initially to start, they had ninety hours, they had to have ninety hours previously inspecting under somebody else, so they couldn't just go out and do it on their own, and they had to provide a certain amount of hours of continuing ed. The Internechi group, like you cannot become a member of that organization until you perform a certain amount of pre-inspections, even before you get to. That's why I said, that's why we kinda went through some of them. Unfortunately, one of them up there, one of the inspection foundations, like all you have to do is just be a member, you just have to pay. And I was like, uh-uh, we don't want, so the ones we kinda kept in had that continuing ed and pre-existing knowledge, as opposed to just paying money, and you get your certification. So we'll, I will pull that up.
Okay, if you could do that, and also, I would like for us to look at some type of internship, so that it shows a person who wants to get in business has taken the steps to do the things that you, you should know to get in. And if that means an internship or working for another company as an apprentice or that kind of thing, journeyman, whatever you wanna call it, I'm just concerned that some people will be taking advantage of, we just open the door and let anybody in. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem?
And my question is not necessarily on this one, but who assessed the fee for a license for small business?
For a license for a small business?
Uh-huh, when they come down to get a license.
That, that would be our finance, business license division.
Okay.
And they would propose those fees typically when it comes to the budget process.
Okay, I'll talk to her afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Mr. Allen, I assure you that us Realtors will keep checks and balances on these inspectors.
Well, and I tell you, the main thing, I think, for these, these folks getting into business is they are bonded. They have insurance, because the real fear is if they make, you know, it's a pretty important job. If they make a mistake, a homeowner could end up with a mess on their hands and nobody to go after. If they go out of business and they're not bonded and they're not covered by insurance for some of this stuff. So, you know, the experience, for the most part, will come, and the, the industry's changed so much, now you get a stack of papers that thick. I mean, they check whether or not they like the color of your carpet, just about. Used to, you paid thirty-five bucks and a guy would go out there and tell you if all the plugs were working, and that was it. So the main thing is that the consumer's protected. Real estate agents, they're savvy enough to be able to use people that they have confidence in, but we need to make sure that the, that the consumers are protected by them being bonded and make sure they've got some recourse. All right? Thank you, John. Oh, do I turn you off? I apologize. You did.
Thank you, Mayor.
We need to get the City Manager turned back on. Hang on, we got one quick question from Counselor Davis, let me see if I can turn him off, too.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I had to take a quick restroom break, but, Mr. City Manager, can we get John back out here?
Sure. Director Hutchinson?
While he's coming, I will just say, Mr. Mayor and council, that I asked them to come, because you know they are working on the South Commons for the softball tournament that's going to be coming up in July. And, you know, trees, that's a very sensitive issue around Columbus, Georgia. And, and so I learned that some trees have been marked through some sources, and I asked them not to touch trees till we figure out what's going on and brief you and make sure you're clear and, and the public is clear and know what the plan is. And so Mayor Sherman is here, and Newt Aaron, who's working with them, and Ryan Clements, and they're gonna talk about trees tonight as part of what they're doing at South Commons.
I think Mr. Hutchinson's back.
Sure.
If Counselor Davis could ask his question real quick.
Director Hutchinson, I just wanna know, I know, council, you're aware of what we've been working on as far as these properties that have been out there in just terrible condition, right? And I just wanna thank you and your staff. I had to step out of the restroom real quick, but I've seen a few of these properties, and you guys are really stepping it up and taking charge and making progress, but the department's doing outstanding. It's a difference between night and day, and so just, we thank you, I thank you for doing that, taking that initiative, moving forward. I don't know if anybody's seen some of these properties lately that they've cleaned up, but it's night and day, and I think the neighborhood, the residents, the citizens in the area would thank you, too, as well. And I know you've got some others on your radar screen, so we're making progress in that area. So thank you, thank you. Tell all your folks there at the department, we appreciate them.
Well, council, you're saying it to them, and I've been telling them, he's gotta work hard.
We always have time for praise.
All right, but again, you know we're around here, you guys, it's not, we're from Missouri, it's show me, don't tell me.
Good job, John.
Thank you.
Sorry for y'all waiting.
That's okay. Good evening, thank you for having us here. I'm gonna yield the conversation over to Newt Aaron and Ryan Clements. They're experts, they've been involved in every aspect of the planning of this project, and so they're gonna give the presentation, and then we'll take any questions that you may have about the project.
Hello there.
Hey, Mr. Aaron.
You know Ryan Clements, my associate, and I'm Newt Aaron. I live at five thirteen Double Church Road here in Columbus. The subject's trees, and I would like to, you know, I was gonna say, I'm glad to see y'all, I wish I was seeing you a little earlier, but I am glad to see you. And we drew straws to see who was gonna make this presentation, and I lost. So I hope I'll be able to satisfy you, and I think that I can, in this case. We're in the development business, and the city is in the development, regulating the development business. And development and construction, unfortunately, usually requires cutting down some trees. Our regulations, because of that, stipulate for a given site of a given size, that if you cut down trees, or that you've got to have a certain amount of trees. So if you're going to cut down some trees, you gotta put some back, or you've gotta have enough existing trees on the site to satisfy the regulations on that. So I just wanted to mention that to you, that this is, we're going about this, the project is going about it in a very way that's in accordance with the regulations of the city, in this case. The, in talking about the specifics of our site, you know, we're, we're doing a fair amount of work that involves being near trees. In fact, some of the work is due to trees being near. There are, we've got, if you'll give us the next slide, please. There we go. We have to submit these plans as part of the permitting. And on this, you'll see circled in red are the trees that are on our site that need to be removed. There, the large section that goes to one side is all along the walkway that goes from the parking area up to the stadium. And so this is the main curb appeal piece of, of how you get to the stadium. We're doing two things that are necessary for the project with regard to that walkway. The first is, we're making it wider. We expect to have more, you know, with these tournaments, things that are coming up, we expect to have more people, so we're making it wider and more inviting. But a more important one is, the trees themselves, the roots of these trees themselves have raised and, and put a lot of the sidewalk out of level. So there's a tripping hazard, it's, it's not safe for everybody to come in, and it sets a bad tone for what you're coming up to on that. So that's most of them. The ones off to one side on the same side as that are due to access, we need to be able to get into that field without going into the other. And then some of the others have to do with an installation of utilities, where we're having to put in some additional drainage. So there are twenty-three trees that are shown to be removed. Now, if we could have the next, right, there we go. The next slide is a piece of a proper, a drawing that was also in the plan submitted for a permit, that show the calculations as to what is required for this site. And you can see that we're required, if I didn't read this, we're required to have one hundred and sixty-two tree density units. Now, tree density units, I won't bore you with all the details, but they have to do with size and spread of it. You get more points for a four-inch caliper tree than you get for a two-inch caliper tree, obviously. So we're required to have, on the site, one hundred and sixty-two, and even with these twenty-three being removed, we have two hundred and sixty-six. Now, there's been talk on, frankly, and what generated some of this concern, there's been talk about removing more trees, because of maintenance issues and running it, but, and it should be pointed out, and I, I love trees, don't get me wrong, it should be pointed out that trees and growing grass move in the opposite direction. That if you walk around the outfield, which I did today, if you walk around the outfield, the grass, 'cause there are a number of, let's go back to the other drawing, please, all along the outfields, the bottom of the sheet is south, so the sun is shining over the trees and it's shading about twenty-five, thirty, sometimes forty, fifty feet of the outfield, and the grass is measurably less dense along there. But we're not asking to remove those trees, but I just wanted you to know that, conceptually, you know, this is a softball complex, and it has to have good grass, so it is a problem in many ways. But we're saying to you and assuring you that we, this project has no intention of removing any more than those required for the construction, twenty-three that are shown. And if any more are determined that need to be, we'll come back to you and ask your approval on it. So are there any questions?
Any questions from any of the counselors?
Do you vote?
I think this is for information purposes.
Well, yes, yes, sir. It's for information purpose, I, you know, I just, knowing how, you know, there's strong feelings about trees, I did not want any trees to be removed without the public having a chance to hear what Mr. Aaron has just presented. From a tree density unit standpoint, TDUs, one hundred and sixty-two trees would be required. You've got over two hundred trees, even after you take these.
Two hundred and sixty.
The twenty-three out, and so, you know, there, there, you're not going down to just do.
If history repeats itself.
Yes.
Regardless of the notification process, once the trees start coming down, you guys are gonna get calls.
Absolutely.
So the important thing is that you, you've been briefed on it, you understand that this is, this is as measured a response as is absolutely possible to be able to facilitate the necessary upgrades to that, to that facility. And, and, and so if you have any questions or concerns, you know, just, just, I mean, you can call in and ask the City Manager's office.
And so what I'm gonna, what I am going to ask Mr. Aaron to do is, in four or five sentences, explain what you just said and send it to me, that I can send it to the members of council. You just said, you know, you talked about the site and, and what the, the required TDUs would be on, on the site of that size, and how many trees we have, and how many would come out, and where they would come from, and then what we would have left, which still exceeds one hundred and sixty-two TDUs that would be required.
I'll be glad to do that.
If you'll do that.
That'll be quite easy.
Counselor Thomas had a comment, ma'am.
That, we will have, with the twenty-three you're gonna remove, there'll be two hundred and forty-three trees left. And I, I understand the requirements. One of the questions that, that I have, I know that walkway going into the complex that is shaded, is a beautiful walkway. Are you doing anything at all there to enhance that or to, I know you're not gonna put back more trees, but.
Certainly, we are interested in the curb appeal. We're in, even at the risk of the time, just since I'm with you, let me just say what we're doing right now. As you're aware, the contract's been. As you're aware, the contract's been awarded for the city portion of the work and we're working closely now with Parks and Rec and the contractor and our designers to finalize the scope and get started. In fact, they started demolishing the seats, the seats were one of the long lead time items. So, we're still working to finalize the scope, but of course, we want to have a, an attractive curb appeal as you come up to the stadium there. So, there'll be some landscaping, there'll be something to dress it up.
It just won't be those 23 trees?
That's correct.
Or, yeah, however many are on that side.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to, as I said, that's one of the really neat things about that. Of course, I don't have to deal with crowds and those other things when I go out there.
Well, it is neat, but my landscape designer asked me to emphasize this to you, that it is incompatible with good grass. And it is incompatible with a number of things. You know, this is the way I put it somewhat insensitively perhaps, is this is the South Commons softball complex, it's not the South Commons tree complex. We just have to remember that. And that doesn't mean we're going to cut down anything else, but the 23 are necessary, are the minimum necessary to do this and I'll be glad to send you that.
First thing tomorrow morning.
And I know that you're going to do the right thing, Mr. Aaron.
You didn't hear him respond.
Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I can get to you tomorrow.
Yes.
Already got most of it written right here.
Right, yeah, before you start.
I've got most of it written right here. Don't worry about it.
Mr. Aaron, Counselor Davis.
You know, I'm sure that we have our city arborists, being that it's, I mean, I would expect our city arborists to be out there, but I would ask the question, is Trees Columbus involved or any of our groups out there, nonprofits that work in the community, are they involved in this aspect? And one other thing, I'm not so sure that the TDU position is appropriate in this being it's a public park, but I would think if it is, then the TDUs need to be equally matched and put back somewhere, someplace. I just ask if they've been involved to help maybe facilitate or to ease some of the concern in the community.
Trees Columbus, both the chairman of the Sports Council Board as well as Ryan spoke to Dorothy McDaniel about it to try to make sure that she's in the loop. Do you want to add anything to that? And so, we're certainly talking with them about what we're doing.
Y'all making progress or?
We got a long fight with Mary, with Dorothy.
Dorothy.
Yes.
Okay.
And the city arborist.
And these are just comments, okay? It's what I've heard, so.
And the city arborist, I'm sorry.
I know that work needs to be done, but hopefully, there's a way to mitigate it.
The city arborist has been involved also.
Counselor Allen.
Well, I was just going to encourage you to, if you're going to replace trees that you're taking down, why not go ahead and take down the ones that are interfering with the grass growing in the outfield? I mean, why not go ahead and make it what it needs to be to make a full-fledged softball, you know, stadium?
We would have to study that a little bit and the reason I'd say to you is that there, although this is a very large site, there's relatively few areas that are not near the fields where you could put a bunch of trees. In fact, the current plan does not show us putting any back, I want to make sure you understand that. The trees that are being left satisfy the TDUs. So, we're not currently showing to do that.
I understood in the earlier comments that you were working with Trees Columbus and they were going to ask you to replace some trees.
Well, if I gave that impression, I didn't mean to. We're working with them and talking with them, but so far, we have not worked out anything to actually replace some trees. And I don't know that she's asked, she, Dorothy hasn't asked that we do that, we just wanted to make sure she knew what we were doing.
Well, would it be, would it be better for the complex if you remove the trees that are interfering with the grass growing or at least trim them back?
Yes, I can assure you of that.
Do you have plans, do you have plans to do that?
Well, actually, the landscape designers have prepared an alternate plan that removes some of those. They did it on their own because of their concern about the grass. And this is going to sound a little legalistic and maybe it is, we still made the TDUs. You know, if we took them all down and didn't put any back, but I think it would, it would not be appropriate to approach that at this time.
You said if we took them all down and didn't put any back. What you meant was if you took all the trees that are interfering down, you would still meet the TDU.
That is correct, that is correct.
Well, that was my question. I would prefer that we go ahead and fix it right now and not have to worry about it in the future. And if you replace any, don't, please don't put pine trees up. All they're going to do is get tall and fall and then we got to repair a fence or something else, a dugout or whatever it is.
Or a chow.
Well, I think I can commit to you, if you're interested, is, we can look at all that. Let us look at all that.
Thank you.
And see how it would work.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, yes, sir, thank you. Well, I think the significance of this discussion is that Columbus loves its trees and we've got some very conscientious groups that help us keep an eye on it. In fact, my wife is a member of Trees Columbus, so I'll get to revisit this when I get home because she's not already asleep, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's agenda.
Great. Thank y'all very much for waiting. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, we have minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion second to minutes be received. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
The next few items are board appointments. We have for the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners, Mayor Henderson is nominating Jamie Waters.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Waters. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
The next two are also mayor's appointments, the Building Authority of Columbus and Circle.
I'm going to go ahead and renominate Ms. Sturkey, but I thought you were going to check on to see if those dates were accurate because it says in there that her date, that she expires on 2/19, the new team, she's finishing an unexpired term for somebody else, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll renominate Ms. Sturkey. Motion approved, motion second approved. All those in favor of the confirmation, please say aye. Any opposed? She is confirmed. And I'll come back with Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then we have council nominations for confirmation. We have two seats on the Animal Control Advisory Board that may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Anthony. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed. Was the motion to confirm both?
To confirm both.
I'm sorry. So, the motion was to confirm both Carla Anthony and probably, yeah, and both of them have been seconded.
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure council knew they voted on both. I was the only one that didn't know that.
Okay, item seven and eight, these are district seat appointments. We have the Civic Center Advisory Board. We have districts one, two, three, four, seven, and eight. May we have a second?
Well, we can't, Ms. Coles can be confirmed, so there's a motion and a second to confirm Ms. Coles.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear the second.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you.
For District Three. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Then we have the Recreation Advisory Board. We have districts five and six. Yes, thank you, Counselor Crabbe. Then we have nominations by council to be confirmed at the next meeting. Council Barnes is nominating Sharon Bond for a seat on the Animal Control Advisory Board and we'll bring this back for the February 12th meeting. And then, we have, the next three items are open for council nominations. We have Board of Zoning Appeals, Building Authority of Columbus and Circle. Then we have nominations from organizations and/or agencies, Board of Historic and Architectural Review and Uptown Facade. We have not received those nominations or requests from the agencies and so, we will bring those back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor, Counselor Thomas?
I thought that the Uptown Facade Board had agreed on Debbie Young.
I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas, I had not received that information.
Well, if you look at what's on the, on the clerk's agenda, the very last item says Uptown Facade Board. They did, they did approve that. Mr. Ross Horner and the board approved that, so.
I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas.
So, what do you need, a letter from them?
Yes, we have not received anything official from them as of yet. Okay, thank you.
Well, why don't we, why don't you reach out to them and see if they're okay with that?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we will reach out to the organization.
Okay.
And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I think just by way of explanation, I think the clerk is doing an outstanding job. She's trying to, she's trying to assemble all the ones that require action together. So, it looks a little different, so it's a little bit.
It's very difficult.
It is, and we're going, and I think there's going to be some minor changes being made to highlighting some of the names so that it's a little more clear, but we, as we group them all together, the intention is to make it easier to, for council, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is, anybody have any further business?
Executive session.
The executive session, that's correct. Had a reminder.
Personnel and litigation.
Where, there's a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel and potential litigation. Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, if we could, let's clear the, clear the council chambers. We are back in regular session. We just left executive session where we discussed personnel and litigation and no votes were taken. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say goodnight.